Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting on school safety for the East Lansing Board of Education. This whole board, can we get a roll call roll please?
Dr. Etzel.
Here.
Dr. Chambers, present. Dr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Walton.
Here.
Ms. Kumier.
Here.
Ms. Ferris Highland.
Here.
Ms. Fink. Ms. Lakeville.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda of the January 30th, 2023, official meeting as presented.
Second.
Move by. Dr. Chambers seconded by Dr. Lawrence.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add board discussion as item five, uh, item four, I thought.
Second.
Do you accept that as a ready amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So we will just move forward with the, uh, the motion as presented with the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we will, um, bring up our superintendent, superintendent Lakeville, and she will present her school safety plan this afternoon.
I'm actually gonna co-present with Assistant Superintendent Glenn Mitchum this evening. Thank you for all coming tonight. I want to first recognize and acknowledge the concern, the fear, and the anxiety the recent events at East Lansing High School have caused many. Express my true appreciation for your engagement and am committed to listening to all of you and taking meaningful action. I am confident that together we can make East Lansing High School and all of our buildings safer and healthier places to learn and work. Also, the presentation we're about to share and the plan and the feedback link will be available on our website tomorrow morning. I'm gonna start with the purpose about of this plan and presentation. One, we wanna make sure to share accurate information regarding the series of events connected to the ongoing conflict of East Lansing High School students. We wanna update, update stakeholders, all of you, on the actions that have been taken over the past week to respond to the Board of Direct, Board of Education's directive to develop a plan of safety enhancements at East Lansing High School, including immediate, short-term, and long-term actions. We wanna communicate our process for evaluating recommendations to this point and our plan for implementation or pursuit of many of these recommendations. And finally, we wanna offer an opportunity for stakeholder feedback to the plan and to the additional recommendations that are being considered. We approached this plan with open minds. The recommendations reflect the input of many. The feedback survey is designed to gather input on many important but demonstrated controversial recommendations, and we came at this by refraining from putting our own judgment on it this early, but instead by listening to you and including some of the recommendations, many of the recommendations we heard, and an opportunity to get stakeholder feedback prior to determining whether or not to move forward in pursuing some of these. I do wanna share some limitations of this plan right up front. While we've accomplished a lot and have executed numerous recommendations in a very short amount of time, some of the recommendations require additional time and development prior to implementation. We are acting swiftly but wanna ensure that our expectations and any changes we make are well communicated and supported so they will be successful and sustainable. We still need time to gather input from stakeholders, especially from our students, on recommendations they deserve to weigh in on. We need time to collaborate, collaborate with our staff, students, East Lansing Police Department, and others. We need time potentially to hire additional personnel that may be needed to implement some of these recommendations, for example, possibly a door monitor, possibly a camera monitor. And we need some time to coordinate, for example, can we, and if yes, how quickly can we hire an onboard security personnel while we continue to provide constant supervision and monitoring of students during the school day? So, I wanna think of this as a draft plan, as a template for moving forward that will include your input moving forward while we share what has already taken place immediately, what's already been implemented, and what's in progress to take place as early as this week.
Thanks, Dory. Hi, everybody. I'm Glenn Mitchum, and I have the honor and privilege of being the Assistant Superintendent for East Lansing Public Schools. And before I start reading to you, I am gonna read these slides to you. I'm gonna go off script for a moment. I've been, I think this is my 32nd year in education. That's at seven different schools, five different school districts, three different states, and I love East Lansing Public Schools. I know, as Dory said, we're, some of us are scared, some are mad, some are upset, some are sad, but I assure you, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this, we're gonna figure it out, and we're gonna get better. Reason East Lansing is special is because of all of you, our students, our teachers, and our family members and community members that make up ELPS. Another reason this place is special is because of the leadership of Board Lakeville. I've never met anybody, I've been in a lot of different places, as I've said, it's more committed, hardworking, caring, supportive, and smart, Dory Lakeville, so. So we thought it would be a good idea to start off with no elephants in the room. Let's get right to what is on the media of your minds, and we're gonna, just so that we're all on the same page, talk through a list of events. A lot of these things you already know about, but maybe not everybody knows, but so that we know that what we're all sort of focusing in on, let's go through a summary of events. Again, I apologize, and I'm gonna just read to you. December 5th, 2022, a fight broke out during passing time in the Locker Commons involving numerous students. ELPD was called and responded, multiple students were suspended. January 4th, 2023, two students opened an exterior door to allow three individuals, two of which were non-ELPS high school students into the building. These individuals were in the building for approximately 30 to 40 minutes. No incident occurred yet, something could have happened, we acknowledge that. The students who opened the door for these individuals were, in fact, suspended. January 19th, 2023, following a triple header of basketball games, a fight involving eight to 10 students broke out in the parking lot. Staff and ELPD intervened, and a staff member reported seeing a gun fall out of one of students' belongings as they picked up their items to flee. Multiple students were suspended and/or pending board action for long-term suspension, expulsion, or permanent expulsion, and those hearings are being scheduled currently. Although Dory said at last meeting, I want to again acknowledge that we made some mistakes there. Those, that, when that happened that evening, we should have communicated that out to everybody in this room and the East Lansing nation, and we swung and missed on that. Another thing we should have done is to make sure whether it took all night, Dory, I think, left the building that night at 11:30, but that doesn't matter, we should have done whatever it took to make sure those students weren't in our school the next morning, and we failed to do that. January 20th, 2023, during passing time, five students engaged in a fight in the Locker Commons. Adults immediately intervened, multiple students were suspended and/or are pending board action for long-term suspension or expulsion. Next slide. January 24th, 2023, three students reported a social media screenshot indicating that there may be a student in the building with a weapon. The school was put in shelter-in-place status to eliminate student movement while administrators investigated. The report was traced back to an overheard conversation between students that was misinterpreted. ELPD was on-site while the investigation was completed, and here I also wanna acknowledge that there was some misinformation that was originally sent to our parents that we were in lockdown, and you will see here shortly, we are evaluating our, our safety protocols and will be doing a better job of communicating accurate information instead of inaccurate information. We, in fact, were in shelter-in-place, and also we realize that many of you don't know the difference between lockdown and shelter-in-place, and we're gonna make sure our communication will clarify that so we know, so you know exactly what is happening. There's also some discussion about the timing of when we call police. We live in a world where things happen instantly, and as soon as we went to shelter-in-place, students text their families, and families called police before we even had a chance to understand what, exactly what was going on. But again, those protocols and procedures are being reviewed and determined to do what the best course of action should be. January 26th, 2023, ELPD was called to East Lansing High School to assist with the removal of a student from the building following a non-violent infraction. The building was placed in shelter-in-place to status, shelter-in-place status to eliminate hallway traffic while the situation was resolved. Upon release from the shelter-in-place, two students physically assaulted another student in the bathroom, and those students are currently pending long-term suspension or expulsion. I should mention that every time I say that about, that about pending long-term suspension or expulsion, that means they're not currently in school. January 27th, 2023, East Lansing High School was closed in order to complete investigations, hold meetings with families of students involved in the past week's incidents, plan for immediate changes to some procedures, evaluate and action plan safety enhancement recommendations, and plan communication with staff, students, families. Dory's gonna tell you more about that, it was a great afternoon of collaboration. Sorry, I'm still up. Tried to snoot out there. So, let me talk a little bit about the response to these student incidences. In being as transparent as possible, but in compliance with confidentiality according to FERPA, we are able to share that students who have participated and continue to engage in physical violence, including, including those who instigate, inflame, or threaten others in person or through social media, will face serious disciplinary consequences, including long-term suspension and/or expulsion. Next paragraph is the legal statute. I will read it to you, it basically says that if a student brings a dangerous weapon to campus, then they, unless you can exclude them for certain reasons, they must face expulsion. What's important is that, that last paragraph, it is our goal to do everything we possibly can to educate and support the students who come through our doors. Unfortunately, this situation has reminded us that there are some students that despite our best efforts are a danger to others, and therefore we will recommend to the Board for expulsion.
So I'm gonna talk about our next steps, this was following the communication that was sent out late Tuesday night last week. I sent it on behalf of the Board of Education. On the evening of Tuesday, January 24th, the Board of Ed released a statement to the community responding to the concerns around school safety that were shared at the January 23rd meeting. This communication included direction for me to develop a plan for immediate, short-term, and long-term safety enhancements for East Lansing High School. A list of recommendations to consider was included in the Board's letter. This list was compiled from public comment, emails from stakeholders, East Lansing High School staff and students, and the school safety assessment report from Secure Education Consultants, which I'll speak about in just a moment. At this point, over 30 recommendations have been discussed by district administrators, with 24 of these recommend, recommendations evaluated by a team of district administrators, building administrators, high school teachers, and staff. And I wanna go back just for a moment to the Secure Education Consultants and these school safety assessment reports. Last, last fall, the state of Michigan allowed a application for what are called school safety grants, they were Section 97 grants along with Section 31AA grants, which is mental health of staff and student grants. That was in October, and we immediately applied for, there was a series of five of these grants. We applied for all five of them. One of the grants funded school safety assessments, was specific to that, and only funded school safety assessments. We looked ahead and thought that once these grants are awarded, that some of these companies who do these school safety assessments are probably gonna get pretty busy, and so we went ahead and moved forward with scheduling the safety assessments. On November 29th, 30th, and December 1st, individuals from Secure Education Consultants were on-site all day, they visited the high school, middle school, and each of our elementary buildings, had meetings with stakeholders in each building, also had a meeting with district administration and building administration here at the high school about district protocols and procedures. And from those assessments, they produced reports for us, and reports that include a little bit less about what's working well, because their reports are really intended to provide recommendations to us. And those reports were received by us on January 15th, so a couple weeks ago. One thing, while, while we've read those and incorporated some of the recommendations into our evaluations, I, I just wanna be very upfront with the fact that those reports are not available to the public or able to be released per FOIA. They contain safety information about how we respond to emergencies in our school, and the information that could be released from those could be used by individuals who would wanna get into our school and would have information about some of our vulnerabilities. So, those reports are not FOIABLE as reports, but we will be sharing, and many of the recommendations that are in there will be very transparent about the information we're able to without releasing information that would increase our vulnerability in an emergency, and we will do that not just with the high school, but with our middle school and each of our elementary schools as we move forward with repeating this process and creating enhancement plans for safety at each of our buildings. I'm not quite as good as Glenn is at going off script, so I'm gonna stick to my plan. The next part, I wanna share a little bit about how we went about evaluating these 24 recommendations Friday, and I, I need to first acknowledge and give kudos to, gosh, I think we had 15 folks in the room who, on a moment's notice as of Thursday, as late as Thursday afternoon, actually, one was as late as Friday morning, agreed to participate in this process. So, we had really, really robust conversation about these recommendations, and I think came away with some really great plans for either moving forward with some of them that have already been implemented, or determining our next steps in, in how to implement some of them. So on Friday, a team of six district administrators, three building administrators, five teachers, and one non-teaching high school staff member met all afternoon and engaged in a process to evaluate 24 recommendations. In small groups, teams engaged in a SWOT analysis of each recommendation. A SWOT analysis, if you've not participated before, is to identify the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats of each recommendation. Individuals then completed a review of each SWOT analysis, so the small groups then, everybody got around to see everybody else's SWOT analysis of the recommendations they were provided, and they offered their feedback, questions, concerns, and alternatives by sticking sticky notes all over these large pieces of chart paper that contain the SWOT analysis. Then our last step was, each member then reviewed each of those analyses and the feedback in order to independently vote whether or not to take action, or at least pursue additional steps for consideration. For example, whether this needed to be taken back to high school staff for more information and feedback, whether we needed student input on some of these, whether there was a cost to some of them, and identify some of the barriers to implementation so we could pre-address barriers before moving forward. I also wanna mention, before I turn it back over, that even though we looked at it and everybody gave individual votes, we didn't rely purely on the outcome of those votes and purely on the numbers as to whether or not to move some things forward. There were some recommendations that were very specific to high school staff changes, such as a cell phone policy, backpack policy, and while there were six district administrators in the room, we know that the important votes right there were coming from our high school folks, and if they thought we needed to at least take it to the high school staff for more input, we kind of ignored those numbers a little bit in the vote and decided to move it forward. A few of them that maybe were voted down by, at least numerically by votes that day, ended up in our consideration list today because we wanted to get more in, in, input from you, from our students, and more stakeholders to determine whether or not we wanna move forward with it. So, we used the votes as a gauge, but they didn't just by number dictate whether or not something moved forward with those 15 individuals in the room.
So as Dory said, we broke these recommendations down into what is immediate, and immediate defined for you as already done, in process, happening as we speak, started happening today. Short-term, those are, they're, they're in process, they've started, but they're not completed yet, they'll, they'll be likely completed, I would say, roughly within the next 30 days, that's what short-term means, currently in process. Long-term, things that you hear tonight are things that are also in progress, but they're gonna take some time to complete, and so we would say somewhere in the neighborhood of, by the end of the school year, or before the start of next school year. So that just gives you an idea, and I'm gonna start explaining what are immediate safety enhancements, enhancements have been. Number one, communication of new rules and procedures and reinforcement of many current rules related to safety. This occurred this morning, first hour with all students, and I believe Ms. Schorsbeck sent an email out yesterday and shared what was read to all of our students first hour with our EL families. The use of only door number one for student entry during school hours. Increased supervision and monitoring of hallways and bathrooms, both between classes and during classes. East Lansing High School implementation of no hall passes during first 10 minutes and last 10 minutes of class to decrease hallway traffic and allow for more efficient sweep of halls and bathrooms. Availability of our district wellness leader to staff and students at the high school for engagement, consultation, and resources for mental health. Elimination of passes during Excel for the next two weeks to allow time to create a better student tracking system and reduce students in the halls throughout our Excel period. Some more immediate things that we've done. We've reminded students to report any safety situation or concern immediately to the main office and not on social media. Misinformation can spread quickly, and it is important that inaccurate information is not spread, and I would parenthetically add that that, that bullet applies to all of us. If you hear information and things come that you know about, we very much appreciate you letting us know directly. Social media is not a helpful way for us to get accurate information. And then increased supervision of hallways and bathrooms temporarily by willing East Lansing High School staff for additional, for additional compensation during their planning period, and that's temporary while we work with contracted security company to add long-term personnel, it's taking a little bit of time to get that in place. And then finally, additional security and/or supervision at our athletic events.
I'm gonna share some of the, or our list of short-term safety enhancements that are in progress, and again, this, these, we expect to have in progress or in place any time between this week and the next approximately 30 days. First, the reinstatement of an in-school suspension program that aims to provide both disciplinary consequences and effective rehabilitation services and support while keeping our students in school. A review of emergency protocols and language for these protocols for all staff and students. Additional exterior doors will be alarmed and/or door prop notifications added. Additional lockdown buttons are being added near this office secretary's desks, they're in the office, there's one in the office right now, but not near enough to our individuals who are occupying that space and will be responsible, or often be the first of people likely to press that button. We mentioned additional personnel to increase hallway, bathroom, and exterior door supervision and monitoring, but we're working to pull in contracted security company and to take that responsibility on, and as, as Glenn mentioned, this is an area where our, our school staff has stepped up already to help out during this gap time, we really appreciate that. On the next page, I think one of the key pieces of feedback we've, we've received is around communication. It's been, it's easy for me to communicate throughout COVID time every week on Sundays and bi-weekly now, it's a lot more challenging, and we haven't been put to this task too often to communicate emergencies or urgent situations to you right on the spot, so we've identified that as a gap in our communication processes and have some plans for improving that, both the content of the communication and the timeliness of the communication. First is to utilize available enhancements within our existing software, so within our Bright Arrow system, which is what releases our e-blasts and our robo-calls, there are some features that would allow more timely and more thorough communication. We're evaluating a mobile safety alert system that would allow us to quickly send mass text messages, one of them we're looking at is utilized right now by all Eaton County schools and others around the state. We have the ability and are working on crafting emergency, emergency message templates that are pre-written, but we will just fill in the portions that are applicable to that situation, so it may start off with a part that's pre-written that says, "East Lansing High School has gone into shelter-in-place." Shelter-in-place is used for the following reasons, and explain it, this is not a lockdown, but things we can craft that will better notify you and give you the direction and the information you need, that we fill in, then adjust the specifics of that situation and can get it out much more quickly. Assigning an identified individual in the district to be on call and prepared to receive that information and send these messages. One of the challenges we saw and experienced last week was those of us who were evaluating, investigating the situation, were also trying to craft that communication on the spot, and so we need a better process for identifying someone who will give this information to an individual who will have this an individual who will have this fill-in template right up and ready to go, fill that in, and send it out immediately. And participate in training on crisis management and communication. There's one coming available in early March, which just happens to be good timing, so we will send some individuals to participate in that to improve our communication and response processes as well. We also plan to collaborate with the East Lansing Police Department to plan and schedule active shooter training for all staff. We've had some of this a while ago, but it's not up to date with every person on our staff, and we've had turnover the past number of years, so that will be a short-term implementation action step as well.
Some long-term or ongoing safety enhancements. Remember, long-term are things that we hope to accomplish before the year is out or for sure, certainly before the start of next school year. We plan to meet with the City of East Lansing, the East Lansing Public Library, and the East Lansing Police Department to discuss public safety and collaboration around student safety. We will request an assessment from the fire marshal to determine if any of the exterior doors at East Lansing High School can be put out of use. There are currently 86 of them. What building needs 86 wards? This seems crazy. So we're going to check to see if that's allowable. Meet with mentoring groups and/or other student support agencies to provide mentoring and social development of students involved in conflicts. We realize that although it's used too often, it takes village, and we need help and support from other folks that are skilled in that, and we're open arms for that help. Evaluate our continuum of intervention for students to exhibit the need for self-regulation supports and strategies. You know, we want to know, are there, is there more that we can do? Because expelling students is not our first priority. We want to work with all kids, so we want to explore all avenues. And then provide de-escalation training for all of our staff so they're more equipped to handle these tough situations.
Adding a little bit to one of the recommendations Glenn just shared, I had the opportunity to attend the Friday evening community conversation over at Hama Center and was made aware of and reintroduced to some mentoring groups that are out there and willing to come into our schools and mentor and support our kids. So we will be reaching out and scheduling time to discuss the opportunities to bring them in. I'm going to share some recommendations that require more input and evaluation before we can determine if and how to move forward. First one, being a change in the cellphone policy. That's one we really need to hear more from our staff about, we really need to hear more from our students about before we make a decision on whether or not to move forward with any changes in that policy. Change in our backpack policy as well. That's another one we really need to hear from staff, look at the weaknesses of changing that, the strengths of changing that, and hear from our students about that. Little side note, when the board put out the communication last week and listed this list of recommendations they've gathered from all these different resources, some students saw that list and immediately emailed me with their feedback. Please overturn this rule. Please over, use your authority and overturn this new rule. And I had to explain these were not rules, they're just recommendations that are being evaluated. So we need to hear from our students about some of these, though. Required wearing of IDs by students and staff. Additional personnel to support the implementation of some of these recommendations. Like I mentioned, we may need to hire additional door monitors, we may need to hire camera monitor. The reinstatement of a school resource officer. This is one that is in the survey, and we want to hear your voice about this. The addition of metal detectors. This one is also, some people fall very differently on it, but we want to, we don't want to just pre-eliminate some of these options, we want to hear your voice about this, we want to get your input and determine whether or not to move forward with exploring these. And finally, the consideration of a bond proposal specifically for safety enhancements that would include technology-related safety enhancements and construction of a secure entrance at East Lansing High School. And on the next page, you will find a link to the feedback survey to weigh in on this plan and those specific items I mentioned.
Okay, so to wrap up, let me just emphasize the survey that Joy told you about. Please use the link in order to provide feedback to this plan. Remember, this presentation will be all live and electronic for you in the morning on our website. The survey window will close at noon Monday, February 6th. Students, high school staff, non-high school staff, families, and community members are welcome to provide feedback. If you have previously, you hear this, if you have previously communicated your input through email to the superintendent or Board of Education members, please add it again to this survey so we have all input in one place and can filter the data by participant group. So I really want to emphasize that. If you've already said something in email, we'd appreciate if you go back to the survey and say it in there. So one week for your input, and we will invite the board to ask questions or have discussion about the presentation.
I would like to thank our superintendent, our administration team, the support staff, the LEA, and board members for the incredible amount of work that has been done in the last week to address the safety, emotional, and educational needs of our high school students specifically, but of all of our kids in general. Would like to thank every person who has and will share their concerns, solutions, fears, and hopes with the board and the superintendent. I would like to thank every student who participated in a peaceful walkout last week to express her concerns. Every person in this room and beyond is involved because of our love and our concern for you, the children. Most importantly, I want to apologize. A week ago, parents, students, teachers came before us because we were scared, anxious, angry, and hurting, and my comments only added to your pain. I am deeply sorry for my comments. Nobody should be, nobody should feel afraid in school, no student, no teacher, no staff, no parent. I regret not doing better at empathizing and acknowledging your pain and feelings. My words were hurtful, and I really do, from the deepest part of my soul, regret my words and hope someday you can accept my apology. When situations like this arise, we tend to pull the rize. It breaks my heart, especially when children are at fault, excuse me, because at the end of the day, I honestly believe we have more in common than we do not. I believe we all want our kids to thrive and to be physically and emotionally safe, all of us. There are parents who are scared for their children's safety and parents who are so distraught about their children's behavior. I only ask that while we work to support our children in our buildings or those who can't be educated in our buildings, that we extend a bit of grace to those parents whose children are seriously struggling with inappropriate behaviors right now. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my board members to ask questions of the superintendent to make comments as they see fit. And then following that, we will move to the public comment.
I can start with just a couple of questions. My first question is just, what does it look like during the staff's prep period when they're monitoring the halls and the bathrooms for our kids as you decide, or you know, before we put permanent personnel in place and that's in the plan?
Well, it just started today, and it's only taken place today, so we have, I want to acknowledge that Mark Contoni worked with our high school administration to develop a sign-up sheet and make this offer to our staff. But they're responsible for walking the hallways, checking in on the bathrooms, checking the doors, just being another layer of eyes in the halls and addressing some of those needs we heard about last week, like the bathrooms and the exterior doors.
And I want to be clear that they're being compensated for this too while they are doing it during their prep?
Yes, yes, and it's volunteer-based. It's not a requirement for anybody, it's only for those who want to sign up and do this for additional compensation. We very much hope it's a short-term gap filler as we engage with a security firm to see if we can get folks in.
And I just have, I have another question. Does the additional security at athletic events also include, like, winter formal, for instance, coming up on the 11th? Has that been considered?
It hasn't been discussed yet, but I presume it will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on a question about the athletic events? It just says adding additional security to that, and I was wondering if you had any idea what that might look like. I know this is short-term, so...
Yeah, I think it could look a couple of different ways. I mean, it can look like staff. It's always best if we have people at our events, and I would say compensated staff, but it's always best if we have people at our events who know our kids and our kids know. So, you know, we always look for folks who are willing to come and help supervise at night. We have, we have officers from the police department at our evening events at many of our basketball games. We're looking at if we can engage with a security company, also having them work into the evening, not just during the school day, but to help monitor the hallways and the doors after school and make sure our doors are secure at the end of the evening, as we have many people coming and going for practices and competitions in the evening. There's also, we've had some parents volunteer to do this, and I think we want to explore that a little further with making sure that we go through the volunteer form that we have in place for the district and provide some training and guidelines for helping us supervise, but we certainly don't want to turn away willing adults who want to come and help us with this. So I think any or all of those could be in place.
I have a question about the reinstatement of a school resource officer. Do you know, if you don't, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, do you know if there is a possibility of having an officer without, if it's a police officer, but without having your gun in the building?
I don't know.
So I have some questions about communication. And I think what we've heard over the past week, maybe longer, that communication is key when you're transpiring. And so I have some questions about, you said here, participate in training on crisis management communication. Can you talk about who may participate in these, in that training?
I think once we determine who's going to be both, I mean, crisis management would be administrators, likely not all of them because we can't pull them from our buildings, you know, at the same time, or right now it's really hard to pull anybody from our buildings. So that, again, just came about, we haven't developed the list. I also think it would be those responsible for the communication so that we know what is crucial to include in that communication to families. So administrators, folks possibly from our tech department who will help us engage in providing that very timely and thorough communication.
So thanks, what you said, and this is not so much a question, but this is something that I feel deeply about, about communication, and I feel that, I'm just going to put it out there, that we do need to have someone who's a full-time communication coordinator. I think you as superintendent, you have a lot of jobs, and that doesn't mean that I think that this person writes everything that they'll say, but I think we need to have someone in place that is communicating in a timely manner, who can, and not just for crises, but, and not just for the high school, but I think for all of our buildings. And so I just want to put that out there, that's my stance on communication. I think I've brought it up a couple of times throughout the two years that I've been here, and I want to just state that again, that it's a big concern of mine, of communication. And so I'm just going to state that, and hopefully we can have some more conversation. I don't want to bring into board today and say we need to implement something, because I think we need to have more communication on what that looks like. And so it's not a question, it's just a statement of mine that I want to put out.
I have several other questions.
Can you let us know when the survey results will be shipped to board and community? Is there a date?
As soon as possible after the sixth, after their release. I think we want to probably do some, it'll take some time, I'm imagining pretty healthy number of responses, but we will absolutely share all that. I don't have a date set for it yet.
Is there a plan to review the board policies regarding student discipline and conduct to see if there's anything that's in those policies that is hindering the administration or time they need to handle?
I think that our community and our students and folks have asked for review of that, but that would be, that would be better answered by folks on the board since policy is a responsibility of the board and/or the chair of the policy committee. So I don't really think that's a question for me to answer, but I know that that question or that action is better requested. But I would refer it to anybody else who wants to respond.
Well, as the chair of the policy committee, if I'm hearing the question correctly, are there specific policies that are prohibiting administrators in our district from doing their, I guess, disciplining or participating in discipline of our students? As the chair, I don't know that. So any feedback I can give from administrators as to specific policies that are hindering your ability to do that work, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we can provide that. I will say, I just happened to meet with a group of students Thursday morning for about an hour, a very insightful group of students in our high school, and I know they conveyed to me their desire for policy, I believe it's 5206, the one that was included in the board's communication around suspension and expulsion to be reviewed. That was from the students I met with, so I think we have a responsibility to take a look at that one.
So I appreciate that feedback. And let me share, I think, other than the timeline, the school board, we, our policy provider changed in the last school year, we reviewed all the policies and adopted the new manual, completely new policy manual in January. A great deal of that policy comes right through state law, as a recollection, and very little, very little changes from that policy. So if there's something specific, again, from the student group or any administrators, they can send it directly to me, we'll review that policy, excuse me, that policy committee.
Trusty Ettle, I know that you have received 2,000, 100 emails, but one of them is also one for me, just suggesting that we, we have a policy meeting scheduled already, but maybe considering moving that up to talk about these issues, even if, anyway, taking our feedback and move forward. So I'll circle back with you about that while this meeting being, I know Trusty Cormier is new to that committee too, so sooner rather than later probably makes sense. I'll circle back to you all about scheduling.
I have a couple more questions. The board of ed directive was only for the East Lansing High School to begin with. Are there plans to draft McDonald Middle School safety plan? And I just wanted to also clarify, the security assessment that was done at the high school, was that also done at the middle school, or is that something that we would have to pursue or disengage in?
The security assessments were done for all eight buildings already. They spent three days in our district, half-days at our high school and middle school, and then they did our elementaries in a couple of days. So those have already been completed, and yes, there are plans to review current procedures, policies, infrastructure at the middle school and the elementary, and use a similar process to develop an enhancement plan at every level.
Further questions, comments? Further questions, comments, concerns, or need more? Right now, again, I want to thank the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for your presentations. See, now is the time for public comment. I want to remind community members that this is not a give and take. It seems very uncomfortable to people, the time you come up, you give your comment, and we just stand here and look at you. We don't respond to questions or comments or anything like that. And I know that's a little weird, but that's just how it works, unfortunately. Let me read the official statement. This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all of the persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed to additional time. Superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings, which goes against what I kind of said about there's no give and take, but to clear up a significant misunderstanding. So, Cor, do you have other? Okay. What I'm going to try to do is list two or three individuals, so you know your order to come up, so you're ready to come up to give your comments. I'm going to start this evening with Norm Scott. Next will be Deborah Rivas and Sherry Brooks.
I'm Norm Scott, special ed teacher at McDonald Middle School and East Lansing Education Association president. The story of the issues of our high school developed. You've seen a number of social media posts of negativity toward East Lansing High School. Many are claiming that things used to be better around here, you hear. East Lansing used to be a great school district. Well, let me tell you, East Lansing is still a great school district. Despite the negative sentiments of many social media posts, the high school is not out of control. There is no doubt that incidents were not handled well largely due to real or perceived policies of the board. And the ELEA has long been calling for more trust and better tools for our administrators, and it feels like we're making progress now in that direction. More importantly, EL remains a great school district. Students and staff continue to operate at a high level, and many of those currently in school will go on to great things, as many have done in previous years. Just this week, our science Olympiad team won the Hazlin Invitational. Hours of precision work done by dedicated students and staff could not possibly be done in an environment out of control. Last month, our model, our model UN team dominated the regional competition that they attended. Our sports teams are well-respected, our wrestling team is on the rise. The fine arts department is outstanding here. This past weekend, the University of Michigan released its first round of admission notices. All across our senior class, there were celebrations as the notices came in. We'll have Ivy Leaguers again this year, we'll have Military Academy attendees. Our ELL department continues to grow, and great kids are doing great things, just as they have for a very long time in our buildings. So as we work our way through these issues that confront us, let's not lose sight of the potential harm we do when we publicly trash our schools. Is there work to be done here? Of course. Should we be willing to confront issues at the root of the problems that have caused recent grief? Absolutely. Should individuals be held accountable for the problems that we were trying to solve? Certainly. But our students and our staff do not deserve to be trashed by claims that the building is out of control. Buildings. Over thirty teachers stepped up just this weekend to offer to patrol the high school hallways during their prep hour. Teachers don't give that kind of support in out-of-control schools. We have more work to do here, but when this community, this school district, and our outstanding faculty work together, there's no better place to learn. Thank you.
Deborah Rivas, outside, Sherry Brooks, and Sue Wheeler.
Hello, my name is Deborah Rivas. I have an 11th grader at East Lansing High School. I am an alumni at East Lansing High School as well. I wanted to say that I feel that the school hasn't, while they have addressed things tonight, that we felt like we were in the dark. I got most of my information from my son, who's very scared. And he, you know, basically has told me on a regular basis that it's the same kids, over and over. And he's very uncomfortable about coming to school, and that makes me feel uncomfortable bringing him to school. So as far as having empathy for these kids that are repeating this, I am sorry to the parents, but I'm more sorry for all the other parents that have to deal with those kids and what they're going through. Most people have mental health issues, and I mean everybody, not just kids, adults and staff. Everybody has mental health issues. So that's not something I have a lot of empathy for, because I feel that the kids that aren't doing those things are the important ones right now, because they're the ones that are threatened. And I want to make sure that you guys are thinking of those kids, and not just the ones that are causing the problems. I do want those kids to get help, but I want the kids that are trying and doing the best they can while they're here to be the focus. And one other thing that I want to make sure that I say, because I've been dealing with this personally at East Lansing High School, my son is not, he's trying, you know, he's athletic, but he likes to play basketball, but he's sought out his own mission, and he likes photography. He has done, had nothing but, you know, stop signs put up by the athletic director about taking pictures and having requirements and all kinds of things. This kid could be out doing things way worse. And the fact that he is constantly getting almost harassed by the athletic director is appalling to me. And I have spoke to the principal about it, I have not spoke to the superintendent about it, but I intend to make, have written an email about that. But for him to have such resistance from the athletic director, and then finally come to find out she is the person that he would have to get his credentials for, was a big, a big problem for me, since I sat down with her and she didn't make that transparent while we were sitting there, and she was saying, did you do this, did you do that? And he is trying, trying to go all these avenues. But my point is, there are students that are trying to do things positive in the school, and they're getting doors shut on them left and right. So I would also like to have that taken into consideration when dealing with students trying to take pictures at games or things of that nature. But mostly, I just want to make sure that I said that I want the students that aren't causing these problems to be thought of first, because they are the ones that have to deal with being fearful of coming to school, not the ones that are causing the fear. And that's all.
I am Sherry Brooks, and I am one of the parents of one of these, of the students that are involved in these groups. So a full transparency is my child. So I'm going to apologize in advance for any of the fear that has been, that has been sent out. But I want to take you guys back, because I want to, and I'm addressing the board as well, that last year, my child was involved in one of these incidents in the restroom. Recognizing that there are gaps in action, I took him out of the building. Because I wasn't able to hear from the administrative team anything that we could do as a community, as a parent. I wasn't able to hear anything that said, okay, this is, this is how we address this fighting as a community. What they wanted to do is they wanted to have these one-offs. We're going to talk to you, we're going to talk to them, we will talk to them. That doesn't work. Get us all in the room. I asked for that last year, in the last academic year. It never happened. So I took my child out. When I took my child out, there was no plan for his success. When I, and when I took him out, I took him out of the classroom, so he enrolled in the public, in the online school. He finished. He's done. He went from ninth grade to finish. He's finished with the academic year, so he's going to graduate. There was nothing in place to support him socially, to support him emotionally, to support him physically. He did the work. So academically, did he find success? Absolutely. But he's still a child. He's still a child, and in this space is where we have to meet him at his humanity. This is still his social space. So we have to learn, and we get them all together and teach them how to communicate, to teach them how to address these issues. Because what I've told you is that these two groups, at one point, they were teammates. I watched these kids play Little League together. I've seen some of you all yell my child's name. When he's scoring touchdowns, when he's, when he's making shots and playing basketball, you are there rooting him on. When he's getting in trouble, it's just me. It's just me and my family. When I'm asking for meetings with you all to say, get us to the room together, because this public space is embarrassing to me. I think this is a private conversation. It's a conversation where you say, these two groups, get us together. Because I want to talk to them. From there, as this village, we then teach these children both public and private accountability. Mine is here today. You have a problem, little, come see us. You, the way that you feel, he needs to know that. And I want to be, I want to be very, very clear that he has not incited, he has not inflamed, he has not instigated, he has not done any of those things. He did exactly what the school administrators asked him to do. He was asked to call and ask permission, or let you guys know that he was going to come to these games. He did that. He was asked to go to this, to participate in this online program. He did it, with success. He then came to this school, came into this building, and I was unaware. I was unaware that all of this stuff continued to go on, because I thought removing my child helped you, gave you guys an opportunity to work on some things. Nothing changed, as far as I know. Then he gets into this building, which I'm thinking he's coming somewhere safe, because he alerted everyone that he was going to come. You guys said that he could be here. And then he was attacked. I have a problem with that. That was on the 19th. I showed up. I picked him up. I waited for a phone call. The phone call came on the 20th, and it came kind of in the afternoon. Then that phone call was still like investigated. So I understood, I understand that we move at the speed of life, trust me, I get it. Then I received an email that says that his privileges for attending these games are going to be restricted, because he wasn't, he's not an instigator, he's not someone who started these things. He was someone who they've identified, you know, was involved, but didn't, didn't initiate or instigate. But from there, there's still all of this confusion, because there's additional information that went out that I still didn't get. I'm here. If you call me, I'll be here. Let me know, I'll show up. There's nothing more important to me than being here for mine. I didn't forget me for my time, but my last time, I'm going to say this. When we think about it, when we think about these children, think about them the way, the same way that you think about these, these sports teams and these players, because they trade tunes all the time. In the middle of the season, you could go from being an opponent to happen to be a teammate. So there's, there's some life skills there that we're not taking advantage of. We, we celebrate them for the wins, but do we teach them how to win collectively?
Sue Wheeler, oh, hi. Jill Powers and Brad Lutz.
I'm Sue Wheeler. I have two kids at the high school and several graduates, one of whom has returned to be a teacher with East Lansing Public Schools. And in my professional life, I'm a director of health at the neighboring District Lansing Public Schools. So I wanted to just come tonight and say, you know, when things go wrong, as we sometimes do, it's often a tendency about blame. You know, it's a policy that's wrong, it's a group of people that are wrong. Administrators, or teachers, or just some group that's to blame. Or sometimes it's an individual person, that we want to put all the blame in their pocket. It's their fault that we're where we are. And I don't think any of those things are true. I think the events of the past few weeks are really reflective of what we're seeing nationwide. Our kids are recovering from, you know, I'm tired of the word unprecedented, but of unprecedented times. They fought through COVID, which led to, of course, social isolation. And for many of our children and families, unbelievable grief and loss that they experienced through the pandemic. We then layered that on with the economic instability that came. We had political unrest in the last three years. We've had social unrest. Our kids, our adolescents particularly, have been exposed to protests in the street, publicized about racial injustice, and a crisis with our public safety across the, the whole United States. This is layer upon layer. So when we say everyone has mental health issues, we know for sure that's true about our adolescents. Just last month, the Journal of the American Medical Association published that there, a huge study they did across the United States and France, that said there's a remarkable and significant increase in adolescent hospitalizations associated with mental health conditions since the onset of the pandemic. It's not only endemic, it's all of the other layers as well. The Department of Homeland Security published in December also that in serious school violence, ninety-one percent of perpetrators had measurable psychological, behavioral, or neurological symptoms prior to the event. The data is clear, it's there. This is not an issue of a broken policy, or a broken group, or a broken person. This is systemic. Our students, especially our adolescents, are struggling in East Lansing and across the country. We may just have been a little lucky that we didn't quite see this in our community until now, but it's here. It's here, and it's been here. I think this is a time for repair and connection. We need increased supports and services for our students. Our students who are on the surface, not struggling and not the problem, and our students who are struggling. We need to encourage looking beyond that lens of punishment and exclusion, and look at connection and support. We also need consistent boundaries and expectations. That's, that's an important part of any service and support that we put in place. And last, I'd like to thank the board for your community service. Sometimes at great cost to yourselves to provide this service. I think being a member of the school board is perhaps one of the most vital community service roles there is. You know, as goal of the school, goals of the community. So thank you for your service.
Jill Powers. Oh, by Brad Lutz. And Rainey Inter.
Hello. I don't have a lot to say, but I do have something I did want to say. I feel like in-school responsibility, and just responsibility in general, has been something that I feel like has been forgotten. I feel like in-school responsibility, and just responsibility in general, has been something that I feel like has been forgotten in this whole discussion. I think that it could, I don't want to say no one wants to take responsibility for their actions anymore, but I feel like I'm being forced into saying that. I think that a lot of people have pushed back against the idea of reinstating school resource officers due to this idea of rampant police, or tyrannical police. Whereas, but I think we should expect, for example, a school resource officer to take the same amount of responsibility in a situation that they have caused as a student would in that situation. Sorry. And I think that it's definitely a, not a large ask for people to begin taking responsibility in these situations. I don't know if this is a board issue, a cultural issue, I don't know what kind of issue this is, but I think that's something that needs to be brought up again and again and again, because it just feels like oftentimes responsibility is the most forgotten point of any discussion. Thank you.
Brad Lutz, followed by Anger and former board members in support.
My name is Brad Lutz. I'm a resident here at East Lansing. I have a child at the high school. I have two children at McDonald Middle School. And my wife is an educator at Marble Elementary. We moved to this community four years ago, because on paper, it appeared to be diverse. But what we're not seeing is a diverse community. We're seeing things where this group and that group, and we can't continue in that manner, and I just want to make that clear. I chose this community because I'm a graduate of Michigan State University. I left and went and served this country for over a decade, going places people don't want to go, and then chose to come home. And so, no, this isn't a battle zone. Our high school is not a battle zone. I think the biggest thing we've learned is communication has been the biggest mistake of everybody on this platform. And perception is our reality, and you're gonna have to do a lot to earn our trust back. And I support Board Member Lyons' position that the district needs a communications director. It needs to have one, because the communication has been poor. To find out tonight that there were people in my child's school for over forty minutes that weren't supposed to be there, and tonight's the first night I'm learning of that, that's unacceptable. The second thing I would like to ask is that the board sets timelines for these outcomes for the other schools. Having a grand plan is great, but right now, I don't trust anybody on this platform, so we need timelines. What everybody's asking for right now is to cut the head of the snake off. The high school's the head of the snake. The problem's starting in our elementary. Last year, my fifth grade children saw fights daily at Marble Elementary School. You know what happened? Nothing. There have been fights this year that I've witnessed outside McDonald Middle School. No adults around, supervising, nothing. Children, they're on school grounds. What happens? Nothing. My child was accosted in the hallways of McDonald Middle School. Couple days suspension, supposed to go through restorative justice. You know what I was told? Sorry, we have nine hundred children. We dropped the ball. My child's just a number, apparently. That's not acceptable. You're gonna have to communicate, and you're gonna have to communicate well and honestly. Thank you.
I'm Kyle Anger. I'm Rainey Anger's father. They hope to be there, they hope to be here, but theater rehearsal is going long. Could you please bump them down the queue? Thank you very much.
Absolutely. For our board members in support.
And we are standing here, for those of you who don't know us, all of us that are standing at that microphone and this microphone are all former East Lansing Board of Education members. We have a letter to read from us, and then we have three people who could not be here tonight. We will say their names at the end, too. We'll just all quickly introduce ourselves, and then we will read our letter to you. I am Hillary Henderson.
Kaye Powers, but you didn't expect me back so soon.
And we what?
Didn't expect you back so soon.
I'm Nicole Martin.
Nathaniel Lake Jr.
I'm Karen Herwood Sony.
Yasmina Barawi.
Mel Kunmich. And we all dug out our readers.
To the East Lansing community, and we are also addressing the board. This is an open letter in response to the concerning and unacceptable events at East Lansing High School in the recent weeks. As former East Lansing board members, we know the challenges and responsibilities of serving our community on the school board. We are experienced with the inner workings of our district, policies and the district has implemented, and the disciplinary processes the district utilizes. We do not have access to any confidential information of specific details of recent incidences beyond the information made to the public. However, we hope this letter will provide a useful framework for discussing issues our community faces and what we can all do to make meaningful changes.
We support our school board and understand that this situation is difficult. Change must originate from the school board level, and the board needs the support of our community to act. While the board tries to speak with one voice, it is important to remember that the board is made up of seven individuals with different priorities, perspectives, and life experiences. The board is not always unanimous in its deliberations and decision-making, but they have honorable intentions and share the same goal of doing what is right for our students and teachers. Some reattacks on the Board of Education are unhelpful. Assuming the worst are personally attacking individual school board members is not productive. At this time, individual members of the board could be recommending different paths forward and different solutions. They may not be agreement on the best course. Likewise, we know from our own experience that leadership sometimes requires the wisdom and humility to admit when things are not working and knowing when to change course. Let's work together to find an appropriate way forward. As a community, we must be solution-oriented and ready to go to work. We should hold individuals on the board accountable for their votes, statements, and actions or inaction, but with the intention that accountability will help us progress toward solutions. We should encourage public engagement and promote the best ideas and solutions, regardless of where and how they are to be.
Our district already has the tools and policies in place to respond to incidences of violence, bullying, and anything that contributes, anything else that contributes to an unsafe learning environment. The events of last week have focused some scrutiny on the policies of our district. Our district policies make clear that weapons, violence, and bullying are unlawful and unacceptable in all cases. Our district has many tools and programs to address the needs of our students and to respond to misconduct in our buildings. It is essential to proactively build a culture of empathy, respect, and community while providing resources and services to students in need. We encourage the board and district leaders to continue to promote and evaluate the mental health supports we have in place and ensure that the policies recently adopted by the board fully incorporate the mental health priorities that we have identified in recent years. We must follow and enforce policies, rules, and expectations that we have in place. We recognize that our schools cannot rely on punishment and suspension alone, but removing students from unsafe situations is often necessary. When student safety is at risk and immediate action is required, we need to count on our administrators to act without interference. Our district's policies provide our school administrators and superintendent authority to unilaterally and immediately remove students from the building and school events for up to ten days without board action. Based on our policies, the school board should only become involved when an administrator recommends that a student be removed for a period beyond the first ten days. Nothing in our district policy prevents swift action by school administrators when students pose a safety risk in our buildings.
Thank you for being proactive with the proposed safety enhancement plan, and we support immediate action to promote meaningful, sustainable changes for the safety of all students. East Lansing is not only, is not the only community experiencing these challenges. We understand that violence, both in school and out, is a significant problem throughout Michigan and our nation. East Lansing has the opportunity to be at the cutting edge of formulating community-wide partnerships to nurture our students and ensure respectful and safe learning environments. We have a diverse community of knowledge and experience. To that end, we encourage our school board to create an advisory committee to the board, similar to the Advisory Committee on Sex Education and the Advisory Committee on Mental Health, appointed by the board and consisting of parents, students, teachers, administrators, and a board member, and experts, as partners of working towards recommendations for positive lasting change in the culture of our district. We recommend that the school board explicitly address the following topics and provide direction to employees and stakeholders. Number one, making a safe and nurturing learning environment our top priority. This may include adding staff, amending job descriptions, and making changes to the physical spaces in our buildings. We believe that a standing school safety committee, made up of individuals from diverse backgrounds and expertise, is an essential part of achieving this goal. Number two, empowering and supporting our teachers and administrators and following their recommendations. These are the leaders in our buildings every day who we trust to educate our children. They must be in a position to consistently reinforce a culture of accountability and responsibility among our students. And number three, ensuring that our district is in a position to collaborate with local police and first responders if needed. The city of East Lansing and Mayor Bacon have expressed great willingness to assist our district. We should take them up on their offer to help. This should include reviewing recent decisions on school security personnel and protocol for when and how to involve law enforcement and emergency responders at our buildings.
We anticipated and are grateful that many of these topics were covered in the safety plan. But we also anticipate that the safety plan will evolve over time. While the flashpoint of this issue occurred at East Lansing High School, we need to ensure a positive school culture across the district, starting with our youngest learners. Please keep all grade levels in mind. We have great respect for our school board, our teachers, our school leaders, and especially our students. We understand the challenges everyone is facing, but we have the tools and the team to respond. Like everyone counting on our schools right now, we remain committed to the mission of East Lansing Public Schools, and we want to be a part of this mission. Sincerely and respectfully, Chris Martin, Paul Martin, Hillary Henderson, Hannah Lee Junior, Yasmina Barawi, Karen Herwood Sony, Mel Kunmich, Donna Kepowitz, Elise Anderson, and myself, Kaye Powers.
Karen Tynan Spencer, followed by Tyler Smith and Sam Hozie.
Hello. My name's Karen Tynan Spencer, and I'm the parent of two students in East Lansing. I have some grader at McDonald Middle School and a freshman at East Lansing High School. And may I first say that I kind of put this together a little earlier today, so some of the things that I might be mentioning have been addressed with the enhanced safety plan, but I'm gonna go along to make a note. To give some background, I graduated from a local private school. And while I had a positive educational experience, my husband and I made the decision to move our young children to East Lansing schools for a variety of reasons. We did our diligence, researched curriculum, teachers, programs, all the things you would do when choosing a school. What we did not do was research school safety. We made assumptions about policies, procedures, and expectations for student behavior, because they seem logical. We were wrong. We were shocked to learn that the school where our children are attending did not have active shooter training in this state. But it's important to say that we've had many positive experiences with teachers, coaches, and support staff in East Lansing. However, our son began getting bullied his last few years of grade school. It continued until we requested that he be separated by floor at the middle school, because we had no confidence in the school's ability to keep him safe. That forever changed his outlook on the world at a very young age. It's worth mentioning, because it illustrates a bigger problem. This is not a high school problem. This is a district-wide problem in East Lansing, where students who are not held accountable for their actions early on become more disrespectful and emboldened to act with impunity until we see some of the things that we're seeing now at the high school. What are we doing to help these children? It's not just about consequences. We now ask the board and administrative specific questions regarding the safety assessments conducted by the Secure Education Consultants and funding through Public Act 144 for safety infrastructure. While Superintendent Lico responded that they will review recommendations and create an action plan, we're left with many questions. Like I mentioned, some have been addressed tonight, and obviously, that's ongoing. After attending the city council meeting Friday night, it's abundantly clear that this is an amazing community with amazing people. There are many community members and organizations, such as Turning Point with mentor students, Brave Space, which offers mental health support, and even including private funding that has been offered to East Lansing and is not being utilized. Regardless of all these positive opportunities, there remains a disconnect when we have board members that do not believe equity and safety can coexist. I believe they can. We need leadership. As my ninth grader put it, "If a child cannot feel safe at school, and if that's not reason enough to review policy, I don't know what is." Thank you.
I was Sam Hozie and Heather Bluth.
I want to begin by first saying that I'm pleasantly surprised at the tenor of the comments tonight. A big part of the reason I came down is because I was afraid that the discussion that would happen here tonight would resemble the one that I've seen, unfortunately, all over the internet. My wife has shown me all sorts of things, and people have been saying about this community, this school, the other schools, unfortunately, specific board members. I don't think that anybody sitting in these seats up here, which I imagine are rather uncomfortable seats, given some of the discussion today, I don't think anybody that's a member of this board has anything but the right motivations for being there. All I see from the people on this board is that you care about the students of the district, you care about the community, many of you are members of this community. It's been said tonight that you'll have to do a lot to earn trust back. Perhaps that's so with some, but I trust members of this board. Many of you have been serving the community for many years. Some of you, I believe this will be the third board meeting you've attended. I don't think that's a position to be envied, but I'm sure you'll do a fantastic job moving forward. There are a few things that I wanted to mention as far as the specifics of the safety plan that's been put forward tonight. Just made a couple of notes earlier. And thankfully, many of the notes I made earlier I can skip, because I haven't heard any of those extremely negative comments brought forward yet tonight. I do have some reservations. I tend to fall, I guess you could call it, on the liberty side of things. I do hesitate when I hear people calling for what amounts to law enforcement inside the high school. I don't have a problem with law enforcement. I just have reservations about the direction that that takes us. I just have reservations about the direction that takes us as far as policy perspective and the way things might develop from there on. I'm sure the board will investigate, consider the options, and if that's the direction it chooses to go, I'm fine with that. But I'm sure I'm not the only person in the community that has some reservations. I'd prepare for that. Metal detectors, I am certainly not in favor of. And ironically, from the details we got tonight, metal detectors apparently would not have done much to prevent that anyway, since I understand it happened in part. The metal detectors I've seen in schools or inside the school. So I think metal detectors, it's invasive, it's a bit... makes the school resemble something of a correctional facility or something like that. I don't think it's appropriate, I don't think it's effective, and I'm pretty staunchly against that. I thank the board for the time tonight. I have a lot of trust in this community and the board not to do the things that are easy just out of experience. It would be very easy to just tell people what they want to hear in this direction and that direction. People are bringing forward their concerns, I commend them for that, especially if we're doing it in a civil way. I think that's important, important above all, because that gets us somewhere rather than just slinging mud back and forth. I pardon to see that that hasn't happened yet tonight. I hope it remains that way, and I thank the board for this time.
Heather Booth and Jessica Milat, followed by Tim Darke and Chris Mayhaw.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sam Hozie. Been around a long time. Quick anecdote, and then I'll share my thoughts. I think it was 2017 I attended a basketball banquet. My son was playing JV at the time, and the awards were given out. And I was disturbed by something that I saw. As the awards were handed out, they got to the all-academic awards for the conference, and I noticed a trend. Seven kids got academic all-conference, five kids did not. Seven kids Caucasian, five kids of color. I mentioned it to the coach, I mentioned it to the principal, and I mentioned it to the superintendent that we have a problem. It's pretty much the same football as well. The kids need help and assistance, and we're not willing to lean in where it needs to take place. As I said, I've been around a long time. I'm an EL kid, Pinecrest, Hannah here. Siblings graduated in the seventies, eighties, me and my sister in the nineties, and I've got kids in the school, one left. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be in East Lansing, but at Pinecrest, I had three black teachers. At Hannah, I had three and one Hispanic high school. So someone mentioned diversity earlier. You guys are dropping the ball on the diversity front. Teachers. So you're talking about safety, which is very much a symptom of a deeper issue, and I can understand and appreciate the need to address the short term, but we're talking about long-term accountability and relationships. You know, when the kids who aren't in this district, we are school of choice in fact. We live in the Hazlet District. Before that, we lived in the Oakhamas District. We've been here for a long time as school of choice kids. There's no onboarding. We get hired on a job, we have onboarding as if, you know, you need to know what's happening. We just give you orientation for a day, go figure it out. How can kids be expected to figure it out when this is a totally different culture than what they may be used to? Again, this is home for me, so when we came, "You need to look out for this, and this, and this," well, that's my kids' experience. But that's not how we're set up as a district, and you're dropping the ball, right? We love it when the kids can jump high and run fast, and we'll give them a little bit of attention because of that, but we won't really, "Oh, you're struggling in school? Oh, well, hmm, too bad, figure it out." What do you know about the families? I would walk through the halls. "Hey, Mr. Hozie, it's Coach Smith. What do I...? I saw your dad cutting the grass. How you doing? How's he doing? Where's that connective tissue?" We talk about community, doesn't exist. It's very monolithic here, and everybody's very selfish here. And I've been here a long time, as I said, so I can speak from a historical, maybe anecdotal, but yet it's a historical perspective that we're messing up, and we're missing everything, and it's unfortunate that it's come to this. The safety and the issues, sure, deal with it, but please understand the issues go at home. What kind of relationships do we have with the parents? You know, when you bring them in, don't just give the kid orientation, how about the parents? Everybody needs to be a part of this process. Times have changed, so you need to change. Policies and rules need to change. Not metal detectors and suspension policy, but how about really building relationships and creating a culture of education, right? That's what this is about. I never heard the word "education" mentioned once in your plan. How are we going to improve education? We just need to be safer. Okay, that's a part of it, but these kids are hurting and they have issues. Thank you.
Heather Booth here, let's still make a comment. Okay, I'm gonna move on, I'll set that aside just in case. I'm gonna move on to Jessica Milat, followed by Tim Darke and Chris Mayhaw. I really apologize if I butchered your names.
Hello, I'm Jessica Milat. I've been going to East Lansing School since I was four years old, so I spent 11 years in this district. I just, I'm here to support my friends and my teachers tonight, but I feel it's important to remind the school board that everybody who walks into this building should have a future, and that it's your job to make sure that we survive, and that we have a future, and that we get to go to college, we get to get married, we get to have a driver's license. We have all these achievements ahead of us, and I just want to remind you all that these decisions you're making, they need to think about the future of the staff members, they need to think about the future of the children in the entire community.
Followed by Chris Mayhaw. Sorry, Amy Sayers.
Hello, I'll keep this brief. A lot of people have covered a lot of concerns I already had. My main one is the safety issues here at the school. I filled the slides earlier today that showed the transpiration of events. It was a little bit short. I have friends with children at multiple levels in the district. My children are currently in elementary, one will be entering the middle school next year. But there has been an ongoing problem with violence and bullying in this school, as many said from the elementary level through the middle school into the high school. Me personally, I've been very encouraged by the comments of many people over the last week that explained why they chose to live in East Lansing. I will expand on that with my own personal experience. I went to a small-town high school. There was bullying, there was racism, there was all sorts of hatred in the school that I went to. And I told myself, when I had children, I would never, ever put them in a school district where they had to deal with violence, bullying, and racism, and it just had it swept under the rug. These problems have been festering for a long time. They've been festering for at least a decade. And, you know, if we're going to just kind of say, "Oh, we're gonna work with these kids, we're gonna work with these kids," and I commend the woman who stood up and took accountability, but I think there are also some accountability for some long-term board members in cap. Me personally, I emailed this last week, but it starts at the top, and I feel that you are not contributing to the culture of safety, and I would like you to resign. Deal the rest of your time.
So Chris Mayhaw, Amy Sayers, and Tim Akers.
Giving up my time.
I'm sorry.
I'm giving up my time.
Okay, thank you. Amy Sayers, Tim Akers, Summer Minnick.
Hello, board. My name is Amy Sayers. I have been a teacher here, this is my 21st year at East Lansing. My first year was at McDonald Middle School with those formerly crazy seventh graders, we always called them, but I've been at East Lansing since then. I'm also a community member. I have lived in East Lansing for 22 years. My husband and I chose East Lansing because we thought East Lansing's got this great diversity that it offers. It does remind me of Ann Arbor where I grew up, and I wanted to live in an area that reminded me of my hometown. And I came and I chose to work at East Lansing because I love all the diversity and all that we have with our students. I'm, you know, I'm frustrated. I've been frustrated with things that have been happening with, yes, the lack of communication from our higher-ups, but I wanted you to know, you guys, there's great things that are happening in this district, and I feel like they're being overshadowed. As both a parent and teacher of students in this district, I have a middle school, a schooler, and an elementary kid. I have a somewhat unique perspective in that I get to see and hear about the issues of all levels each day. I am equally frustrated by the lack of the capacity with our staff admin to be able to adequately handle these situations both before and after they occur. Whatever needs to be done to reverse this pattern, we must do. Otherwise, we risk loop looking at a bleaker future for our children, ourselves, and our community. I want others to confidently choose East Lansing, the way my family has, and that's why I'm here tonight to help. Finally, I need to share as positive, no. This past week on Friday, the high school's kids did not have to go to school. The Math Mentoring Program that I'm now in the seventh year working with, three-quarters of my high school students chose to go to the elementary schools and mentor their elementary students. That is positive. One of the reasons I've started this program, Math Mentoring, is because I saw that we needed the elders to help the younger students in this district. I think this program should expand, expand to the middle school because it's a positive impact that you can see. I invite all of you board members to come to those elementary schools and watch the kids in action. It is a great program watching these kids. Those elementary kids hug my high school students when they come in. And this is the time that is just, I really appreciate that you guys giving me this opportunity for this program. You know, let's go back to showcasing the positives so the community can see East Lansing as a great district filled with wonderful staff and students. Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Akers, East Lansing English teacher. I don't want to talk about guns or metal detectors or Alice training. In fact, I resent the fact that through their action, our legislators have put us in the position that we find ourselves forced to use our resources to fortify our building's defenses instead of our students' education. Instead, I'd like to focus on the decisions made within the district that have contributed to our current situation. I know we'd all love to be able to address the circumstances outside of school that some of our kids face that lie under their poor behavior, but our ability to do so is incredibly limited. However, the district bears no small responsibility for creating its own troubling circumstances. I'm not sure of how long ago it was because COVID has destroyed my concept of time, but about five or six years ago during a particularly contentious round of contract negotiations, as I was doing research and fighting to not get a pay cut, I discovered a troubling trend. We've all heard of quiet quitting, but the district was engaged in quiet firing. Despite the fact that our district enrollment was essentially the same and static between 1999 and roughly 2017, the number of teaching positions was reduced by 64.5 FTE. Same number of students, yet almost 65 fewer teachers. A way of example, when I started teaching in East Lansing 17 years ago, my average class size was about 23 or 24 students. I typically had about 120 students total. This year, I began with 156 students. Beyond the additional brain workload, this has created challenges in the classroom. 36 more students means less time for individual student attention. 36 more students means more potential for poor behavior in the classroom as each additional student adds the potential for disruption of classroom dynamics. When we teachers struggle to meet the educational needs of our students, they begin to fall behind. Students who fall behind get frustrated, frustrated students act out. Additionally, we once had resource rooms with eight to 10 students wherein special education teachers could tailor their lessons to meet the specific needs of students who have conditions that interfere with their ability to learn. Now, not only do we have a reduced number of special education teachers, we've done away with resource classes and put our special education students in the classes that are often over their heads while not providing the necessary supports. Many of those students start to fall behind. Students who fall behind get frustrated, frustrated students act out. Another practice the district has dropped to the high school level is the use of a writing lab. In an effort to support student writing growth, we used to cycle English I classes through the writing lab, dividing students into two groups. One that would remain with the classroom teacher, one that would go to a computer lab with another English teacher. With the reduced numbers, both teachers were able to work on student writing in far more manageable numbers, allowing each teacher to get more individual attention. Perhaps the most vital skill to acquire before graduating, writing no longer receives the focus that we were once able to provide, and as a result, our students are struggling with their writing. Students who struggle fall behind, students who fall behind get frustrated, frustrated students act out. Yes, it's important to reevaluate our disciplinary practices. We can't be so focused on the one troubled student and what motivates his behavior that we forget our responsibility to the other 29 in the classroom. Yes, there have to be consequences sufficient to act as a deterrent for future misbehavior, but we are the first and foremost an institution of education. And when we continue to cripple our own efforts toward educating our students, when we continue to allow them to suffer due to our unwillingness or inability to provide the resources they desperately need to learn, they'll continue to struggle, they'll continue to fall behind, and they'll continue to act out. So as you consider the headline-grabbing issues of active shooter training and security measures, please keep in mind the proactive steps we can take and not just the reactive. Thank you.
Summer Minnick, Phil Shonoff, and Anna Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Summer Minnick, and I'm the parent of three daughters who attend East Lansing High School, one senior and two sophores. I come before you today to express my views regarding the ongoing violence my daughters have witnessed for years and indicate my preferred solutions. First, I ask for the resignation of Board Member Katheth. Your demeanor in the last three years was tone deaf and disrespectful. This district is at a critical juncture, and simply stated, you did not meet the moment. I concur with the leaders of the Student Congress who wrote, "She's been focusing more," end quote. "She has been focusing more on her image rather than the best interest of the students and has had a lack of accountability with regards to dealing with expulsion and suspension policies," end quote. If you genuinely care about the student body you serve, you should apologize what you have and step down. This district will not move on until that occurs. Second, should Board Member Ensel refuse to put the wishes of the student body and so many in the community ahead of her own, I implore this body to remove her as president. We need compassionate, thoughtful, trustworthy leaders to help this district navigate these difficult times. You all must know, she's suffered any semblance of those traits throughout the recent events. These are tense times. This simple act would go a long way in restoring my confidence and my children's confidence in this body and their ability to act in a measured, unbiased way moving forward. Should neither of these acts take place, I will be keeping my children home on Count Day, Wednesday, February 8. And further, I implore anyone here who shares my views to do the same. I know the accurate rhetoric to this statement is that this type of action would hurt the teachers and the school communities we're here to support. That is serious. However, in my judgment, the safety of our students and faculty is even more so. And because I do not have trust in the current leadership, it is the most impactful way that I can make my voice and my children's heard. My daughters and I agree the first actions that would make us all feel safer include reinstating public safety resource officers and enforcement of the district's discipline policies. I choose the word "feel" intentionally because I am aware that perception doesn't always equal reality. However, I am increasingly concerned with the long-term impact academically, and more importantly, physically and mentally, with students being in a perpetual state of heightened anxiety. You should be assuring students and faculty that you're doing what you can to minimize the risk of violent behavior by taking these initial steps. Thank you.
Phil Schon, followed by Adam Orange, followed by Jesse Draper.
Thank you Board, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I spoke at the last board meeting, and I've prepared some written remarks, but I've kind of kind of veered from them a little bit because some of the remarks of these other parents are spot on. Some of the remarks that I've heard in regards to, and I'm talking about parents of all race, color, and creed, are saying the same thing, and they're screaming for help. But some of the members of this board ignore, they only focus on what they want to hear, and so what the community is saying. There is a petition, over 1,000 parents, I've never seen a change in our petition rise so fast in this community, calling for leadership. But the board, or some members of the board, seem aloof and seem uninterested, and want to stick to the same themes, but you're not listening to the cries for safety for their children, but it goes beyond to safety for their children. We're talking about improvements in education, and a lot of this is grounded, along the fathers who spoke earlier, I couldn't agree more, actually wrote it down here in my remarks. We're talking about a crisis of common sense, but a crisis of education. Your job as the Board of Education is to educate children. So I did some anecdotal research, I'm not a researcher, I'm not an academician, but I'll tell you this, I went and looked at the minutes from the Ole Miss Board of Education for the last 6 to 8 months. To be fair to you, many, many remarks, comments, research from their board about academic performance, systems they can put in place to improve academic performance across all of their students, including underserved, underrepresented students. They should be applauded for that. I went back and looked at the resolutions passed by this board for the last 2 or 3 years. Resolutions about mask mandates, resolution about gun violence, ironically, 2 resolutions about gun violence and a zero tolerance for gun violence that you don't adhere to in your own school district. But you call our legislators to pass laws. Resolutions about reproductive rights, nothing about improving education, nothing about meeting the needs of at-risk students and underserved students, to meet the needs in the classroom. It's shameful. The very job that you're supposed to be focused on is completely lost. So at the last board meeting, President Ethel, you said, saying I don't feel safe isn't helpful. I need real solutions. So here's some solutions. Number 1, education supports for underserved, represented students to ensure their academic success. Do any of you know, Michigan Department of Education produces a very detailed parent and teacher dashboard for school data. I went and looked anecdotally at East Lansing High School math scores. 11th grade math scores on the MMS test now. Shamefully, there is a 200, nearly 250% gap between African-American students and white students in this school. 42, 43% proficient in math, 17% African-American students. And it's barely budged over the last 10 to 12 years. No improvement whatsoever, very incremental. That's how the long-term members of this board have focused on it. Number 2, transparency for this board, transparency in all matters, including fights, violence, other types of physical interventions that have been undertaken by staff and teachers in every school, at the elementary level on up through the high school. We need to know what's going on in those schools. De-identified data, we're not trying to violate FERC, but we need to know what's going on in the schools, and you should feel a responsibility to report that to the parents at every board meeting. It should be a written report from here on out, moving forward, transparency. Number 2, we've talked openly about safety, and safety in the buildings, all well and good. You're missing the forest for the trees because you're really not addressing what's really happening in the schools and the need in these schools, that's school resource officers, and it happens to happen right now. Well, many people in this room may or may not know is, our board president has spent much time separating herself and denigrating the East Lansing Police Department, and that relationship needs to be repaired. Number 3, safety in the building is only one aspect of this. We need safety and we need security in the external areas of the school, including the parking lots, behind the school, beside the school, because that's where a lot of problems start and end. And there needs to be some monitoring of those areas to ensure that kids are not doing what kids sometimes do, causing a lot of problems there. And number 3, I think that it's about time that we really realize the trajectory of this school. I went back and looked at U.S. News Rule Report, which looks at student performance, graduation rates, and the performance of schools for underrepresented students. 2013, number 6 in the state. 2018, number 18. 2022, number 42. It's fallen fast. School Board, address the real issues. Don't try to smooth it over and tell the parents what they want to hear right now. There are some real important base issues that need to be dealt with, and it has to start right now. And for that reasons and those reasons only, the data says Kath Ethel, you need to resign.
Adam Orange, Jesse Draper, and Megan Chumley.
Good evening, it's always a pleasure to come in front of you, members and trustees of the board. It's also encouraging and noted that the accommodations tonight are fitting, and I thank Superintendent Leiko, Assistant Superintendent Midgeam for the detailed report. I certainly had one of my prouder days in the last 2 weeks, standing side by side with my colleagues who admittedly were joyful to jump at the opportunity to engage with students in the hallway, to sweep the bathrooms, to make sure that they were safe, to make sure that we were safe. Many of them are here tonight. I teach German, but I like to think when people ask me what to teach, I always normally answer, "Would I teach please and thank you first?" And I had asked for permission to share this information, I was given permission. I sat with Kath yesterday in her kitchen, we shared decaf coffee. I was already wired anyway from a pot at home, and I shared that with her because she extended a branch to me on Monday after what I admittedly said to her were inexcusable answers and reactions to what was said here. I'd like to go on record as a teacher who teaches please and thank you to say that it's incredibly difficult to ask for forgiveness in front of such a large group of people. My personal forgiveness, I'm giving back to you. Professionally, if you knew that I was going to speak through this tonight, I wonder, rather than going to the phrase of the extreme left or the extreme right of the way that this pendulum is swinging, if there isn't a compromise, if there isn't a way to restore some faith in your position, potentially in a different part of the board, and you gave me permission to have that conversation tonight. I would ask the Board of Education members, you trustees, to certainly weigh what you're hearing through the painful testimony of students, through staff, and also consider the recommendations brought tonight. But I would encourage you to really seriously look through a lens of starting to heal. And while I accept the personal apology, and I do, and I will remain your neighbor and your friend, I wonder if we might need a different approach for that healing process to really come full circle. I'd also like to encourage our community members to please keep checking in on us. We're continually checking in on your children. It feels so good to know that you care for us, that you love us, that you respect the work that we're doing, that we're trying to do. Last time I also talked, and I used a metaphor, I said that we were sowing the seeds of violence, and I stand by the words that I say publicly and privately, I own those words. I certainly think that those were true words, but that doesn't mean that that has to be the permanent end to what we're doing. I wanted to also publicly say that I appreciate Dory and Glenn, that I do appreciate Amy and John and their efforts to do better. We all are called to a higher being, to a higher power to find in the middle solutions and common ground. I'm asking Kath, I'm asking others, maybe can you tonight, maybe in the future, maybe in the near or immediate or means at all, potentially also find healing compromise so that we can all walk together, step by step, and make progress that every stakeholder who's sitting here or tuned in tonight certainly deserves. Thank you.
Farhan Shikumar and Megan Chumley.
Hi, I'm Jesse Draper. I have 2 students in the high school, 1 student in the middle school. I first want to say thank you to Superintendent Leiko and the 4 board members who responded to my email that I sent last week. Unfortunately, Dr. Ethel, you were not one of them. I teach American history, both at Michigan State and at Lansing Community College. And one of the things that I really focus on teaching my students is that all of these things that happen in our history, and especially the difficult things that happen in our history, are more nuanced than they tend to come across over the news wire and bumper stickers, et cetera. And they need to be evaluated and balanced out in that way. I encourage them to look at the primary sources, the stuff that was there in the moment, in the place, when it happened, and say, okay, so what did they have to say who were there, who witnessed it? And how do we use that primary first, you know, respondent, whatever, first-person awareness to make a decision about how we understand the way these events played themselves out? And so I would ask you, the board, to focus on listening and responding to the primary sources, the stakeholders that are closest to these events, the students and the teachers. I think that their voices need to be prioritized. I think that they are very much the primary sources by which we will judge how this played itself out, whether or not we listen to that evidence. I think feedback and recommendations given by them are now coming to a head, and this is all very promising. Unfortunately, it's also coming after there was a massive community outpouring, and a lot of cameras and television reporters saying, hey, it's time to pay attention. I can't help but admit that I've heard many stories of faculty members and students who have reported problems, concerns, issues, only to feel that they've been discarded, not listened to, or brushed aside. I think this is an opportunity for you to turn that channel a little bit, turn that, and start to listen to those stakeholders, those people who are right in it, who have been giving you feedback for decades, as many people here have said, but we haven't been listening to them. Or at least, the people who have the power to do something haven't been choosing to listen to them. And I think we need to take care of doing that. We need to believe that you're capable of doing that. We need to believe that this is what's going to happen, that we're going to listen to these kids and these teachers and administrators who are there on the ground where this stuff is happening, and listen to what they're saying. And that includes not just concerns about violence, but also classroom sizes. I mean, as an educator, I can say, that's the trend, more kids, fewer teachers. And while that makes good business sense, business sense in education don't always work out. We can't shortchange our kids to save dollars, and if we need to find more dollars, then that's what we need to start advocating for. How do we give the resources to educate our kids with the resources that they need? What's happening right now is not working, and that's why we're all here. But I think if we can really prioritize those voices, especially the kids that have been coming out in the last week, especially the kids that have been posting in the name of the student organizations on campus and saying, hey, we are here, we are in this, you need to hear us. That's who you need to listen to. There's a lot of angry parents, and I'm one of them, and we're going to come out, we're going to be fighting for our kids. But you need to listen to the kids and the teachers in the building, who have been saying this stuff for years. That's all I have to say.
Farhan Shikumar and Megan Chumley, and Carol Worth.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for hosting this important session. The reason we're all here tonight is not because of the fights that's been happening in this school. It's not the kids smoking in the bathroom. Once upon a time, we were all high schoolers, and we've all witnessed kids fighting. We've all witnessed kids smoking. The reason why we're all here is because there was a gun that was parked in the parking lot. So this goes from a school issue to a community issue. Gun violence is not just a school issue, it's a community issue. And you can hire the best police officers, you can bring in the best training staff to train your teachers. But what happens when those kids go out to the community? What difference does it make to you guys if your children kill each other at school or at the park? What difference does it make to you guys if they shoot each other at school or at the mall? This is all short-term goals. We need to think long-term. We need to save these kids from each other. That is the goal. Not bringing metal detectors, that's not going to solve anything. Police officers, that's not going to solve anything. We need to address the root issue, and that is addressing the violence. Why do these kids, why are they fighting each other? Why? What is the problem? Do we need mentors? Do we need coaches to come to the building? A lot of these kids are athletes, that means they have coaches. Maybe their coaches need to come into the building and sit down with these kids. But I stood there and paid attention to this PowerPoint, and I'm like, that's not enough. It's not enough. For our community, it's not enough. We need to do better. We need to do better. It's Ethel. I've known you for a while now, I've worked with you. You love this city, there's no doubt about that. You love these kids, there's no doubt about that. Now, we talk about, the reason why a lot of black families send their kids to East Lansing is because of the work that you have done. It's because of the work that you have done. And I know it's easy to point fingers when things hit the fan. I know it's easy to point at the person who's leading this group. Last time I checked, there's 7 of them, all elected by you guys. Last time I checked, it takes a majority vote to implement any policy. So why is it just her fault? Why? That's because a lot of people are politicizing your kids and their safety. This is all politics. Stop your kids. Because I guarantee you, if she resigns tonight, there is nothing, there's no statistics, nothing that shows that your kids are going to be safe for tomorrow. None. Let's be honest. So let's stop kidding each other. Let's stop playing games. She's not the problem. All the issues that are facing this school district has been going on for years. The only difference is, the media's finally covering it. That's it. The only reason why you feel so well-informed the past few days is because you've been reading the newspaper. It's not because East Lansing been contacting you guys. Let's be honest. These problems have long existed. We all top the ball. Maybe instead of pointing the fingers at her, we should be pointing the fingers at us for not holding our kids accountable. It's home training, home training. Home training. The teachers are with their kids for only six, seven hours, then they come home to you. It's your job to make sure they're home. It's your job to make sure they're being respectful. It's your job to make sure you talk to them when a teacher sends you an email, or when they call your house. It's your job as a parent to check your kids. Because guess what? If you protect the school, and they shoot each other at the mall, the only thing that changes is, we'll go from this auditorium to City Hall. That's it. The faces change, we'll go from the school board members to just city council members. It's not solving the problem. We need to get to the real issues, and stop pointing fingers. We don't need to panic. We have a lot of smart people in this building. Here tonight, we have a lot of smart kids here. We all have solutions. Come together, bring your solutions, and you need to stay on and finish your job.
Thank you. Megan Chubbly, Carol Horton, and... Good evening. My name is Megan Chubbly. I have four children in the district, three at the high school, one in an elementary, and an incoming kindergarten. So we're going to be here a long time, we've been here a long time. I've altered this a little bit after listening to the presentation, so bear with me if that kind of pulled apart a little bit in the middle. First, I want to thank you for the listening forum that was held Friday night, and the work that you have put together the past week. I imagine it was a long weekend. It's not unnoticed. That being said, I want to ask you to push a little further and a little deeper into the implementation of changes. Take a minute and look around the table. I want you to ask yourselves, are the right people at the table to make the decisions that need to be made? Do you all recognize that the steps needed may make some of you uncomfortable and make some of us uncomfortable? Being uncomfortable is actually a positive step and shows growth that can be made by us as adults. What I heard from the mayor Friday was that you're at the ready stage of a continuous process of improvement cycle. That being said, the next steps would be to implement and monitor the actions set forth by the board and the community that supports this work. I want to make sure that the focus is the kids in a safe learning environment. I would like you to consider looking at this at two levels. The first level, you pretty much addressed, the immediate need for safety. So steps you would take to, I kind of call it, stop the bleed. Many of them you put up there, I would invite you to consider resource officers, but looking at it not as something permanent, that is, something to put in place to, again, stop the bleed. It doesn't have to be forever, if you're able to implement system changes, that can be a bridge to get us to where we need to be. Seek consult and collaboration from other experts in your community, your community is full of experts. You have a recently-elected Noel Garcia, who was just appointed to fill the vacant seat on the Lansing City Council. He's a former officer, he would be a great resource. The second level that is rooted causes of what we are seeing at the high school level would require huge system change that would be district-wide. Change like this can and will take time, but is highly effective. Consider this as a district goal. This is a must if East Lansing Public School really hopes to attain their mission of providing every student with exemplary instruction in equitable learning environments designed to educate the whole child. First, consider restructuring your district lines. This may make people uncomfortable or be inconvenient, but it would allow students to have equitable access to resources, both support and enrichment and balance to building populations. Our kids are currently separated by socioeconomic circumstances beyond their control for the first six years of their formative schooling, and then they're thrown together at the middle school and just asked to figure it out, right? Two, truly build and fully implement a PBIS system that is district-aligned and not building-specific. Ensure that all teaching, we're all teaching children what to do and what they can do versus what they can't do. Start this in preschool, start it when they're little. Monitor the fidelity of your second-step curriculum, especially at the elementary buildings, while the children are young. Partner with neighboring districts to see what they are doing and what is working, when to develop, and how they support and develop social, emotional skills. There's a lot of great things happening in this county, lots of great work with social, emotional development. Start at the beginning, expand your preschool program. Right now, East Lansing has two preschool classrooms, they service 32 children. We have five elementaries that all have kindergarten sections. That's not enough, and we know the effects of preschool, I mean, they're lifelong effects. If you are planning to use restorative justice, work to use all parts and steps of this, including the repair step, that includes the teachers, children, classrooms, and families. That piece is missing. It will not work if you're not able to implement all parts. It will not work. It will continue to fail if you don't put all parts of the restorative practice in place. Make sure you have the support staff to do this, it requires a lot of adults, way more than what we have. All plans are only as good as the fidelity they are implemented with, it's important to remember, it's only going to be as good as what we put into it. These are only some strategies, and there's more, I'm sure, but really, connect with your community. The school and community are one, and they're really designed to work together, okay? They're not separate entities, they should be a combination, they're a partnership. It's like a marriage. Sometimes it's a bad marriage, but it is, it's a marriage. Reach out and ask for support. This is not the job of only the board, but make sure that if you are in a position of power, that you are using it for the students and the success of the students and families you serve. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Horton, resident of East Lansing. I'm a junior that attends at East Lansing High School. I brought her here with me today, so she's going to have a few words as well. My initial concern, questions regarding the process that's being used to discipline kids that were involved in some serious disciplinary issues, and what that process was, and whether there were some restrictions or some hindrance in terms of how you implement that policy. But it appears, I know that question has come up a couple of times already, it doesn't appear that there are any restrictions, or it has not been addressed that they are. I was looking at it from the perspective of the kids that are actually, you know, doing the right things the way they should, and how some of these issues are causing tremendous stress on our kids, as well as the parents. But I'm also glad I came, because I've heard different perspectives. You know, I've talked about my daughter, she's an excellent academic student here, she participates in different social activities here, different organizations. But I also learned there are other perspectives as well, and so, meeting those kids that perhaps are involved in some of these issues, that we may have failed them to systematically. So I do commend those that came up tonight to address some of those issues. I also commend some of the folks who've come up here and offered some data, that shows us that there are some serious systemic issues that need to be addressed, and perhaps these recommendations that have come up, you know, through the board as well as through the superintendent, are great recommendations for now, but probably won't address any serious issues in the long run. It's great to have recommendations, to use a SWOT analysis to come up, all those words sound great, but sometimes they're just surface recommendations. So keep in mind that whatever you implement tonight, or in the future, that you have to come back and reevaluate to see if those issues truly address some of the problems in the community, in the school, and make recommendations and make adjustments if you need to. I'm vested in this community, I got a daughter, you know, I have a son who already went through the high school, I got grandkids that are coming up that are going to go through the high school, so we like to see this change systematically, so that all issues are addressed from both perspectives. There's a very fine line when you protect one group of kids, you know, you want to protect, provide health, safety, an academically challenging environment, but there are also kids that also need assistance in other places that will surface sooner or later, either here or later in life, that need to be addressed. You know, I've always been a fan of East Lansing High Schools. I want to continue to feel very positive, I commend, you know, the board and the superintendent for taking actions, but remember, you know, you have to come back, reevaluate what you've implemented, see if that works, and based on some of the data I've heard today, some of these recommendations are going to have to be improved. And my daughter.
My name's Nala Noel, I'm a junior at East Lansing High School. I wanted to start off my analogy in what a gentleman had said earlier, these sorts of things, violence, aggression, fights, bullying, are all a result of deep-rooted causes and deep-rooted issues and, you know, systemic racism, discrimination, whatever. To give a bit of insight, last year, I was a sophomore, I had began, I had what began as just a minor conflict with a couple other girls. About a month or so later, a video of one of the girls saying a racial slur was accumulated by which I had no involvement in. Of course, after it was exposed, it was posted around social media, and the girl faced backlash. The next day, I was called down to the office expecting to have what I thought to be a relieving discussion about the continuous escalating tension between me and the girls. However, to my disappointment and surprise, I was accused of harassment and threatened with having the police taking action against me, with screenshots of my face in a video I did not post displayed on the computer screen in front of me. This was before my parents were contacted and before my side of the story got a chance to be shared and listened to. While the misunderstandings were eventually cleared, it took nearly all of BSU board to do so, to help back me up. My parents only found out about the situation through me, and had to address it on their own and set up a meeting by themselves. A meeting between me and the girls was supposed to be set up, but never happened. Clarification for both parents was supposed to be professionally held, never happened. Restorative justice and all these things to dismantle the tension were supposed to be put in place, but never were. My point is, there's a lack of student support that would prevent escalation of aggression that turns into fights and other sorts of violence. I feel like we don't listen or offer to listen to the so-called troubled kids when they originally need support and help. These are students, not criminals, they deserve just as much support to ensure the safety of everyone. Thank you.
Carolyn Chubbly, and Mel Koenig.
Hello, I'm William, and before I begin, I just want to thank the teachers and faculty members, a lot of the local enforcement who have we've done to still our job at maintaining this sort of school. Especially to the silent majority of students who have not only been able to hold together, but stand united as ever. With all that said and done, I wanted to talk about the power of mental health systems in terms of structural reform. And I'm not talking about the counselors or the teachers, but about the system as a whole. It's obvious that some students aren't getting the help they need, and that's something nobody can deny. In order to worry about that change, I want to suggest that rather than just increasing the punishments in the vain hope of dissuading students from carrying out further threats of violence, we instead establish mandatory counseling and/or therapy sessions that a student has to complete before returning back to school. It ensures that the student is able to receive the help they need while also being separated from other students for the time being. Now, while this student is receiving mandatory counseling and therapeutic help, they can continue their studies online in order to ensure that they don't fall behind other students. I also understand that some people just believe that the current punishments are too lax, and that by establishing systems which give the student the help they need rather than just increasing the punishments, we're only indirectly supporting students' violent behaviors. However, what these student supporters fail to understand is that if we send these kids back home without the help they need, only kicking the can down the road, so that when these students do return back to school, they only commit the same infraction. You need to remember that as an educational institution, your job is not just to teach us how to do exponential equations or write in M L format, but to teach us life skills so that we can go out and create a better society for our generation. I may be a bit biased, but I believe investing in a student's mental health is the best investment that we can make into their future, and it's not just their future, but to the future of our community as a whole. Thank you.
Carolyn Chubbly, Mel Koenig, and Carrie Roberts.
Hi, my name is Caroline, and I'm a freshman here at East Lansing. First, I want to say thank you to the ones who took the time to respond to my email, and thank Ms. Fink and Ms. Cormier for talking to me during the walkout the other day. To those who didn't respond, I would really appreciate it if you could at least read the email. You don't have to respond, just read. Thank you also for taking the time to create plans to make our school safer. I really do hope these plans were stated to make our school better and safer, and the enhancements to the safety plan are truly actions that are going to be put in place, plans that are actually going to be used in real life, not just empty words or people placing emails in plans. Because as I said Friday, and I will say again, if I am going to be told that I will be suspended for leaving this school during an unsafe time to keep myself safe, I hope these students will be suspended, or consequences, for my having to keep myself safe. I also have a few things to say about security and such. I know that we have had a lot of people offer to monitor halls and bathrooms in the school in general. I also know that we have had many people offer to help that were ignored or not responded to, and I feel that maybe we should be looking into it. If you don't want police there, there are other options. I know that in the meeting Friday, a pastor offered 20 men to come and help out our school for free, and maybe we should take the offer so we can all feel safer. I really do think having some sort of security in the building could make it a place, so our teachers are the ones breaking up fights and putting themselves into a place or situation that could harm them, because that's not their job, that's not part of what they signed up for. But if these things are going to continue to happen, there are people who could be hired for that job. And I know that in life, you will inevitably not think at all, overthink, sabotage yourself, create a reality where only your experience exists, deny any wrongdoing, and take the steps to make it right. And sometimes, that may be stepping down and handing the power to other people who are more fit for the job. If you're going to make the step to change and make it right, perfect, but if you are not going to make the step to make it change, there are others who could make us feel safer. The board is supposed to listen to us and our thoughts and ideas, not just themselves. Because in the end, at the end of the day, it's their choices that affect us, our community, our school, our families, in more than it is the board's. I would really love if there were more open and honest communication for things like lockdown or weapons being brought to school, because I cannot explain how scared I was Tuesday during lockdown. At first, we were told it was a drill, and when I learned it wasn't a drill, I sat and cried by key while she held my hand, because I did not know what was going on at all. And all I could think was exactly what was going through your mind when you think lockdown. Also, about the basketball game Thursday night, if I had known what happened, I would not have come to school the next day. And I feel that information should have been sent out to the parents and known before I found out through friends and people who were at the game Thursday, who told me at school Friday. I really do hope that you will take into consideration security and actually follow through with the things you said, so teachers like Maddie don't get hurt, because honestly, Maddie and Katie are the only reason, one of the only reasons I want to even come to school.
Koenig, Carrie Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Mel Koenig. I want to say first, I am honored to have been included in the communication that was brought to you earlier by former board members. I have a few things that as an individual and the mother of two East Lansing graduates I would like to share. Dear President Edso, and esteemed members of the East Lansing School Board, as well as Superintendent Lanko, I want to thank you each for your selfless, dedicated, and unwavering service to our children and our community. During this tumultuous time, each of you is being called upon to dig deep into what it means to be a leader in the face of adversity. Each and every one of you is absolutely committed to the safety of our children, as well as to our teachers, and staff, and administrators as they go through their school days. I have now... I acknowledge the recent unsettling events that have occurred in the high school and have heard the concerns that are expressed by members of the student body and the community that includes our faculty and our staff. I take these very seriously and I know you do as well. I also know from experience, serving in those very challenging positions, that loud voices of adults can foster and inflame fear, anger, and anxiety that do not serve our children, our staff, or our administration or our community well. No one who serves in the position that each of you hold, having been elected by a majority of the voters in the East Lansing School District, takes your responsibility lightly. I know that from having sat there for many years and knowing many who have, including some who currently do. Moreover, those who are chosen by their peers to lead the board are persons who have earned the respect and the support of a majority of their fellow board members. That is also not a position that the members of the community are able to control despite online petitions that I myself personally know from friends in Lansing have been taken to them to sign. So I don't know where all those persons are coming from, but even if they come from this community, and each and every one of them does, those do not total the number of persons who just last fall elected four of these members who are sitting before us, including one who has been under some very, very personal and inappropriate attacks. But just as the members of our community are not able to control who serves in that leadership position, that is up to the seven members of the board. I cannot control, nor can you, but I can sign a petition who serves as a Speaker of the U.S. Congress. Having witnessed the lifelong commitment of the person who currently serves as the president of this board to the health, the welfare, and the safety of all the children of this community and beyond, I have the utmost trust and confidence in the current board president, who has served in that capacity, by the way, this is the third meeting. The members of the school board are working tirelessly as they listen, and they are listening, to the concerns of the students, the faculty, the staff, and the community. I think you all must know, after you saw the presentation by our superintendent this evening, but immediately following last Monday's meeting, when many students and community members approached the board to voice their concerns, the board prepared and sent a message to the superintendent immediately the next day, asking for actions to be taken to address many of the specific concerns and to learn more. That was done the very next day. Unfortunately, it wasn't widely reported. It is important for all the individuals involved in this discussion to engage actively in listening so that solutions can be found together. We're not all going to agree on them. But chasing an imaginary responsible person does nothing to address the very real concerns as some other speakers have noted and that do exist in our schools, but also in our greater community, in our state, and in our world today. Is that missing? Okay, I'll try to wrap up. I would like to say that the current board policies and practices are policies that were put in place predominantly, I believe, though I heard something that might be a little different, by not only the current but past board members, probably more past board members, such as myself. Most were implemented, I believe, prior to COVID, though I think there has been some updates since then. And COVID upended the school experience entirely. I want to say that I personally I fully support and trust our superintendent and the members of East Lansing Board as they navigate
Stop the comments, it's favorable to you.
Why is he special?
Hi there, I'm Carrie Roberts.
We don't want you on the board, it's just a dirty look towards student members, and it's not just tonight.
My name is Carrie Roberts and I'm a mom of a middle schooler. We've only been in the district for a few years, although I have nephews that have gone through elementary school, high school, and we chose to be here in East Lansing after switching from a different school. After watching last week's board meeting, I wasn't confident that my voice and our family's complaints, if we have any in the future years, would be heard or responded to, thanks to stories from other parents, teachers, and students that have presented the past few weeks. So instead of online mentoring and complaining that a lot of people have mentioned here that's been going on, I tried to think of ways that I could help, right, from home. So how could I make other voices heard and mine as well? So Friday, I spent quite a few hours and created an online survey that can be completed as you want to wish. Any type of stakeholder from this community possibly similar to the one that you guys are starting to create as well. So tonight, I am presenting a 48-page document compiled with ideas, suggestions, input, and heartfelt thoughts from over 200 families in the district that have completed it just in the past three days. I am thrilled that we received such, I don't even know how to describe, detailed and long descriptions of thoughts and comments from everyone. We have gotten quite a few more responses just in the past few hours since I prepared the document. So tomorrow morning, everyone here on this stage, including Mayor Macon, our city council members, will receive this PDF by email. I hope that each and every one of these comments, now that we've heard these stories, is brought to the full attention and will be read. Contact information, I do have access to and was not included in this document. Quite a few people asked for anonymity. But you'll notice that our survey was broken down into four distinct categories. Unfortunately, the time that it took me to prepare just this one, the 48 pages are only two of our four categories because we've been receiving so many responses. The first two are campus and extracurricular safety precautions and student behavioral accountability, the two biggest topics that we're hearing about over and over and over since these incidents are occurring. So that's my, one, my first piece of information, right? So how I could take action and how I could help. My second piece of information that I feel is the most important to me and that I wanted to highlight, and I'll read out loud from what I entered in my own survey. In the student behavioral accountability category, one of our sections was help for students that are expelled and/or suspended. In my opinion, the first step is to remove our violent students from our schools and allow the rest of the 1,200 high school students to focus on their learning. I think from the information here for a safety request, that is happening. But I think the second step and a very important part now is to help these students in their own learning environment with mental health resources, respected mentors, and more to help facilitate their reentry into our schools and achieve your mission of becoming global citizens. We can't allow a small group of violent and disrespectful students to take away from everyone. But it's also our responsibility as a school district to ensure their growth in becoming a global citizen. We could utilize classrooms at the Hannah Community Center. We could hire teachers for these students, mentors from the local Lansing area nonprofits that all came forward on Friday evening to ensure that these students can meet certain standards and expectations before they're allowed back into their classrooms on our normal school campus again. We're absolutely willing to help and volunteer with this process. I know quite a few of you have my contact information. I will absolutely be the first to stay from this audience here on the mic that I'm willing to volunteer and help with whatever we need to make sure that this happens. Thank you.
Tyler Hughes and Belle Potter. And then Carrie Holbrook. Is Nana still here? Belle Potter and Carrie Holbrook and Steve Wolf.
Hello, my name is Belle Potter and I'm a ninth grade student here at East Lansing High School. Right off the bat, I wanted to first thank the superintendent with the aid of teachers, admin, and support staff for the new policies that have been implemented this week. I noticed more monitoring and making sure students should be where they were to be today. Teachers also strictly enforce the no-pass policy for the first and last 10 minutes of class. I hope these efforts genuinely continue and the policies are further enforced. I would also like to thank you for apologizing for not communicating about the events of the Thursday night basketball game. I hope the results of this are a learning experience and we see more thorough communication in the future. Now for my main point. I transferred here this year from a different district due to multiple reasons, one of which being repeated violence. While deciding what district to move to, we were in between Oakhamis, Hazlight, and East Lansing, as we heard good reports from all of them. In the end, we ended up here. We made the choice to go here due to the immense amounts of opportunities, whether that be educational or within athletics and extracurriculars. We also wanted to be in a diverse environment in which East Lansing was reported to be. A little over five months into my first year here, I continued to see violence in where I go to receive my education. When I first heard of the horrific fight after the basketball game on Thursday, I couldn't believe I was going through this once again. As these fights continued after the next week or so, I became extremely frustrated. Why switch from a district with violent tendencies and frequent fights just to enter one with the same tendencies? I voiced these concerns to a few of my friends, and they told me it would be fine, everybody's used to it. I already knew that, I experienced a ton of fights in this previous district, so in a way, I was used to it as well. The sheer fact that us students have been accustomed to violence and fighting is not right in any way, shape, or form. We should not have to be scared to end up in the middle of a dangerous situation, whether that be a fistfight or threats of gun violence. Yet again, I genuinely appreciate the actions being taken, but I sincerely hope this action is enforced long-term and taken seriously. I understand that time is needed, yet I hope this time is used efficiently. We can't get lazy and forget, or else this violence will continue on and on. I would love to see more people come to this district, and I want my little brother to be a part of this high school as well. But it has to be a safe and violence-free environment first. To close, I wanted to share my input to aid towards taking action. I plan on taking part in the survey to provide my personal input. Additionally, to provide further feedback, I would like to support and connect back to previous comments made here today. I believe a stronger and more welcoming approach should be made to new families coming to EL. I advise a school to implement a better orientation process that will allow for stronger and more established connections between students and school policies, staff, and the environment of a new district. The district should try and put a focus on making these connections from the get-go so each new student feels represented in our schools. Connections with each other are extremely crucial, as many have established today. That is all, and I hope my words are taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Followed by Steve Wolf, followed by Jay Corsey.
Members of the board, I'll be brief. I did want to thank you for your service this week, Superintendent Lanko, Assistant Superintendent Bitcham. I know this has probably been one of the longest weeks of your lives, and you're doing a great public service, so thank you for that. One thing that I did want to mention is that several folks have talked about not assigning blame. And I agree with that, but it is important to know what the root cause is. And that's not about assigning blame, sometimes we have to look in the rearview mirror and we have to figure out how we got to the place we're at. And going back and being armchair quarterback, looking at board meetings from a year ago, this situation has been brewing for a long time. And I say that not to assign blame, but ask why it hasn't been handled, but to entice you to think about how will you know when it creeps up on you again? It's like that tailgater on the freeway, if you're not watching for it, they're going to sneak up on you, they're going to create a hazard. And it's really easy, once you've implemented your very well-thought-out plan and things have gotten comfortable again, it's going to be real easy for the same situation, a very similar one, to sneak up on you. So my impression would be, please, once you've managed the acute problem, do give some thought to the chronic problem and how you'll identify the symptoms when they arise again. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Steve Wolf, but I've been a teacher at the high school for the last nine years. Well, the students that courageously spoke out, knowing that the Lansing family heard and appreciated their comments, thank you to Gabe, Maggie Carmella, and all the inspiring students that have spoken last week and this week. I have some specific suggestions for us to consider as well. We need to get rid of the arbitrary behavior criteria used to determine discipline and replace it with more concrete policies for all to see. This will increase transparency and lessen potential criticism of bias. To repeat what Gabe said in the previous meeting, acquiring better security measures, especially in highly populated sporting events, soccer, basketball, and football, such as using wands or detectors, would be a simple step to making those areas safer. Not only would people be safer, but they would feel safer, as much as we did at this point. We also need a more diverse teaching staff. This has been a goal of our district for years, and we have not delivered. No one wants to listen to a boring ass white guy like me ranting a lot about history. On a serious note, we could recruit the best teachers if we raise our starting salary up to $43,000. We've lost a lot of good teachers. We've lost a lot of good teachers because this job is worth more than that. As much as I know this would devastate the students, we need to close the school camps for lunch. It opens our school up to a huge liability when students are in a rush driving and is a security risk as well. No more excuses about the cafeteria being too small. Let's not wait for a catastrophe to change our policy this time, let's be proactive instead. It has been said many times that we need more options than restorative justice. And if you're claiming that restorative justice is a huge part of our behavioral plan, we have to do restorative justice right. I was at Lansing Eastern 10 years ago, and they specifically had staff that only did restorative justice. We need to do far more if we want to be on the cutting edge. And finally, board members, please visit the schools during the day to see the real impact of your policies and what happens on a regular basis. Policies that sound good in your offices may not actually work, and you need to listen to those of us who actually are at school and have been endangered by these policies. I'm encouraged by the steps forward that we have taken, but there's much more work to be done.
Sorry, I'm pretty loud, so I'm sure it was silver. Basically, what I did some research as far as a framework for safe and successful schools. It was a joint statement given by the American School Counselor Association, the National Association of School Research Officers, the National Association of School Psychologists, et cetera. Talking about the role of school resource officers, which is what, I have a son who's a junior at the school, at the high school, what I'm interested in, you guys got it. The presence of school resource officers in schools has become an important part of the duty to protect students and staff on campus. Families and school officials and communities around the country benefit from a more effective relationship with local police as part of a school safety plan. Specialized knowledge of the law, local and national crime trends and safety threats, people and places in the community, and the local juvenile justice system combined to make school resource officers critical members of the school's talent-making teams when it comes to environmental safety planning and facilities management, school safety color training, and emergency response preparedness. In order to fully realize the benefits of the presence of local police, the school resource officers must be trained properly. Officers' law enforcement knowledge and skill combined with specialized SRO training for their duties on the education setting. This training focuses on the special nature of school campuses, student needs, and characteristics, and the educational and custodial interests of school personnel. SROs, as a result, possess a skill set unique among both law enforcement and education personnel that enables SROs to protect the community and campus while supporting schools' educational mission. In addition to traditional law enforcement tasks, such as investigating whether drugs have been brought onto campus, SROs' daily activities cover a wide range of supportive activities and programs depending on the, oh, sorry, upon the type of school to which an SRO is assigned. an SRO is assigned. They include conducting law-related education sessions in classrooms, meeting with the school safety team, conducting safety assessments of the campus, and problem-solving with students or faculty. Trained and committed SROs are well-suited to effectively protect and serve the school community. They contribute to the Safe Schools Team by ensuring a safe and secure campus, educating students about law-related topics, and mentoring students as informal counselors and whole levels. And that's it. Thank you.
Maggie Moore, Tracy Edmond, and Randy Branson.
Hello, everyone, my name is Maggie Moore. I teach math at the high school. I personally want to uplift a couple comments by trustee Lyons, a communications specialist. I think that teachers and community members have been calling for this for a long time. We live in a moment where everyone needs to know everything all of us. And I think relying on school leaders and administration to provide that as well is just another daunting task that will serve none of us at all. I think another thing I want to uplift is the former board members coming together to bring that, the Safety Committee, I think is a brilliant idea. We've seen these committees work real magic in the past, so I appreciate that. My notes have turned into like a hideous lesson plan, so who knows where this is gonna go. I watched almost four thousand graduates walk across the stage in May. In 2024, my first kid is going to graduate, with two more in 2026, and one more in 2028. So I am invested. I've been at East Lansing High School long enough to work with three superintendents, four principals, and at least as many assistant principals. East Lansing is my life. It's my social network, it's my career, it's my family, but it is and always has been an incredibly challenging place to work. I told Dory years ago, it's a traffic circle of a district. So many voices, entering, leaving, swirling around and around. You go elsewhere, and it's a straight highway. Hit the on-ramp, and you'd better like it or leave it. They're all moving in one direction. But not here. Here we listen, here we grow, and here we learn, and we strive to do better every single day. Our last crisis was COVID. And Ms. Laco worked tirelessly to listen to all voices and no decisions were gonna please all parties. She asked us again and again for staff feedback. She pushed back the start of school so we could be vaccinated. That does not happen in other places. It was a time of crisis, and I couldn't brag to enough people about our administrative listeners. We find ourselves in a crisis again. We made our voices heard last week, and I felt we were heard. The locker room fights are my fights, those are outside my door. The shelters in place require my help for your children. The children in these fights are my kids. These are my kids too. Teachers, students, and family members standing up to explain how the lack of clear and enforceable rules has escalated into the events that we've seen unfold, as of late was last week. This is not a new phenomenon, and this has been going and growing in our schools, and we are in line with the national narrative. Last Friday, five teachers were at the table, and I was fortunate enough to be one of them. Our voices have been the leading force in the actions that Ms. Laco and her team have laid out. Everything takes longer than we would like, and if we're going to look at all levels of this, it needs to take real time and real thought. For a traffic circle district, we are all in a one-lane runoff, and we are all heading in the right direction, and it takes a crisis to do that in East Lansing Public Schools. The safety of our children and our staff and our buildings and the root cause of our crisis. It takes a ten out of ten crisis in this town to get everyone on board in East Lansing. We're here, this is it. Now is the time. Enforceable rules, let's go. New programming that provides disciplinary measures and supportive restorative rehabilitative practices, we've got ideas. The opportunities seem endless in this moment. But in my experience in East Lansing Public Schools, it has never been anyone on this stage or past stages halting progress and change. It's us. I limit myself to one Facebook dive per day, because I need to know. I cannot look. I wish I could just get off. Last spring, I used an online platform to voice my feelings towards online groups supporting our public schools. Every single day, I take their cell phones, every day, because we have lost the ability to communicate as people. Every single day, I talk to our children, your children, about the dangers of online rhetoric, misinformation, and the importance of real communication. And our discourse in my classroom has never been better. I'm standing up here tonight for our kids. In the midst of all this, I've had to sit on my hands for the past week. When the community heads online to attack schools, I feel like you're attacking me. When you attack our admin, I feel like you're attacking me. It's timeless, Lansing. I've worked with three superintendents, four principals, and countless admins. Now is the time.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Your kids are reading.
Randy Branson. And Terrence Cooper.
Hello, my name is Tracy Edmond. I'm the pastor of Walton Truth Ministries in Lansing, Michigan. Also the founder of United Mentoring Program. I preach every Sunday, and I'm never nervous, but I'm nervous now. But my son graduated from this school, Tracy Edmond Jr. I'm Tracy Edmond. I remember, years ago, I used to sell drugs in this city. I was a major drug dealer in the state of Michigan. I served a sentence of ten years in prison. Gave my life to Christ back in nineteen ninety-four. And when I got to prison, I got my first mentor. And I thought to myself, what if I hadn't mentored high school? Or even middle school? What if someone was there for me? My son was actually born three months after I went to prison. I did the right thing, stayed out of trouble, became an inmate pastor in three different facilities in a federal institution. Came home, got back on the grind, married the wife of my son and daughter, and then two years later after that, two thousand and six, I started a church called Walton Truth. And I'm just trying to muster up everything that I have to try to turn young men around. I believe that people like me were raised for a time like this. My wife moved to East Lansing, I did not want to move here. I grew up in Lansing my whole life, I hated EL, because I'm a big Red. (laughter) But I learned to love the Trojan, so now I bleed blue. I have members in our congregation who are members who go to this school. And so I fight for this community. Three weeks ago, I walked up to this high school because I have some idea about gang activity, and I've never heard anybody talk about gang activity tonight, because that's the root cause. It's not the metal detectors, it's not all this other stuff. You're fighting something you can't see. It's growing in the hearts and in the minds of our young people. So you're gonna have to change the way you think and consider some of the programs that are available to you. There are powerful programs that deal with this, like my friend Terrence Cooper in Prey, Mikey23, United Mentoring Program. There are folks who are focused on this, and we know how they think. I came here to say, hey, I had twenty men ready to walk the halls, because I want this young girl to have a try by slicing. I want their sons to go to college. And I want them to be able to go to the bathroom where they're smelling bacon. If you bring a male presence in this school, everything shuts down. And guess what? We'll do it for free. It wouldn't cost you a dime. I waited and waited and waited, and then all of a sudden, the school shuts down. And I'm like, oh, boy, they're gonna call me now. I never got a call. I never got a call. And I'm hoping that you're willing to work with us now. We work with the mayor of Lansing, I work with the mayor of East Lansing, we partner with LAPD, city council, we put boots on the ground, we go and protect these kids. And all of the kids who are in these fights, they're not all bad kids. They're being recruited by adult gang members. And they're being brainwashed, and they're being intimidated, and they send them back into the schools to recruit other kids. And so they've been friends from pie and crystal on up, and all of a sudden, one kid is saying, hey, come on, you can be accepted with us, there's something going on that you guys don't understand yet. And I don't blame you, but gang activity, educating us to gang activity should have been up there. That's the element that you're missing. It's bleeding over from Lansing. And locked doors, more police, that's not gonna stop it, because it's growing in them. The fights will be somewhere else. And then the gun violence starts, and then the shooting of houses. That's where it all starts. So I'm hoping that you'll allow us in here. I promise you, in the first week, everything stops. Because we'll go on the pathways, we'll run around the name tags, we'll answer their questions, we'll be friends to them, and we can turn it around. If you want to talk, you got my information, just reach out to us, we are here to give every kid a mentor. Don't give up on them. Just because they were fighting don't mean that that's who they are. They were intimidated, and some of them are fighting because they're scared. There's a lot of peer pressure, let's understand that first before we give up on them, okay? So I'm here to help. If you want it, I'm here. If you don't, I'm still here. And I'm gonna pray for you too.
I'm glad you got to Bill, not everybody, but Tracy. He is my pastor, so you guys have him down in five minutes, that's awesome. I also want to start off by thanking Superintendent Laco. She has, you know, I'm a handful most times, but she has supported us. I've raised six children through East Lansing School District, unfortunate or unfortunate, my son is part of what is considered the problem, good or bad. My questions really were, is what are we doing to discipline? How are we holding our investigations? How are we holding our administration accountable to properly investigate offenses, actually document in tightly manner, do follow-ups on multiple things? I am an advocate for all children, especially my own. I am an advocate, I am that mom, that I am always at the school. Everyone in the building, I think, knows me, kids know me. My son has, in the past, been a problem, I'm not saying he's perfect now, because that would be a fallacy, but we're focused on the wrong things. We're saying these children, we're suspending them, and then what tools are we giving them? I've asked the school for homework assignments. If you're gonna suspend him, you're bringing him back into an environment where he is already, I mean, he's a little bit, I don't wanna say he's delayed, but he has learning opportunities. And you suspend him based on a group of people that he grew up with, and we're calling them a gang? And they're labeling these students, we're targeting these students? And I know for a fact that I call it bullying, we're saying the kids are bullying, but we have an administration that bullies our children, to include my own. I will hold everyone accountable, to include my own son. And nope, not perfect, still learning, but are they getting better? We've always said restorative justice, but I'm not seeing it. I see no plan, I see no program. What happens next? My son, he was on that list, heaven forbid. But again, a complete investigation did not happen. I've also asked for meetings with the parents. I've gotten phone calls, my son has been threatened. I've been threatened from these active parents. As adults, this is unacceptable. Are we treating everyone fairly? Absolutely not. Did we target a group? Absolutely, but I've also seen multiple videos of the people that you're not talking about that have been occurring in the last two weeks. Was the gun horrific? Absolutely, absolutely. It is a community problem. But we also don't have enough minorities at East Lansing setting any examples. I went to the administration, I gave them a list of resources to include Pastor T. They contacted, none of them, my father volunteered to come out. Mr. Lake. They were given resources, no one has contacted them. That is a problem, and that was months ago. So if we're not going to follow up as administrators, how do we expect our kids to be held accountable? This is a continuing problem. So I'm that parent. So if you all need me, Ms. Brooks, we should probably hook up before, because our kids apparently are the problem, and we're not afraid to talk about it. But looking at this board, you need some diversity, and we need to talk about it.
Terrence Cooper. And then Erica Hayes. And Lydia Anne. DM.
Hey, hello, everybody, I'm not gonna take a lot of time or anything. First of all, hats off to all you students, man. Like, the students, I told y'all what they need, they done told you guys, I sat in this weekend, I sat in this, and like, took something off my schedule, my birthday was yesterday, I had birthday dinner, rushed out of the ZO meeting over there, because I wanted to be here, because I've been hearing about this for two and a half years. I have fights in your bathrooms where no adult ever showed up. I'm video. I have fights in hallways where nobody responds. I know that my name's been thrown around because of the work that I did, I've done, and we've been doing throughout the city, between advanced P, between the school districts. I already was one of the roughest school districts in the state at the time. And we flipped that thing around, violence isn't our problem now, now we're onto the education piece, and that's what school is supposed to be about. People ready activate youth is just that, that's what I do. I want to activate you guys to be great, because you guys, no matter what, none of those people aboard up there, it's a change of regime. So I want all my youth here, and all my young people here, you gotta know, there's a change of regime coming, and you guys are going to be the next group of leaders, the next group of board members. So start to prepare yourself for that. Expelling isn't always the answer. What do you do with the student after expelled? Who's following up with those students? I think some, like, it's so crazy, because I have this thing in my phone that I was gonna, but literally, everything everybody said, the community, what you guys are saying, they're telling you guys what you need to do. Like, it's not hard, like, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, man, they just taught me a whole plan, like, to write down, you know what I mean? Community, people ready activate youth, we out for all of that. Pastor Tracy said that he would come in here for free. If he comes in here for free, I'll come in here for free and walk around the hallways. I asked, I left my job when you guys were in lockdown, knocked on the doors until I got to one of the principals and said, please just walk through your hallways to give the kids some type of company. I know these kids. I deal with kids. I deal with them. I deal, I dealt with their stuff. And he's making tremendous, he's making tremendous strides, but we only want to think about the stuff that he's done for them. And see, you can't ju, you probably don't know it, but I went to prison for five years or so. Two thousand and eleven, I was a criminal to most of you guys. But now, this is me. And I don't want any of the kids, or any of the people, or anybody who's getting caught with a gun, to go to jail, to have to do that, because not having your freedom is a big thing. Not having your freedom at school is horrible, and not feeling safe going to class. And I'm on, and the principals have a job. I know that, like, I know school systems in and out. Everybody has been assigned to that school, right? Our principals have a job to do. Our assistant principals have a job to do. Our teachers have a job to do. Our lunches have a job to do. That's not breaking up fights. They don't have time to build a relationship with a kid that got came in on school of choice just because he can play basketball. And I hear when people say volunteer, volunteer, this is not a volunteer job that East Lansing needs, this has been happening, and I've heard it, somebody said ten years. I got two years footage on me. I got two years footage on me, and so it's not no, it's not gonna end just like that. It's gonna take time, and time, and time, so. Superintendent, I've been trying to get a photo, sorry, and I just, I would love to get a chance and show you guys a proposal. And I have, I have a current job that I won't, like, be out in the sun, but I have a team that will come out here, and they will do that to restore justice, peace. They'll walk their hallways, they'll watch their doors, we'll put one on the camera, and they'll do all that, but it's already written on, it's already proven that it works. And then I'll end this last, people told me, I don't need a pat on the back, somebody told me this just today, I don't need a pat on the back from anybody, because the impact shows. And so if you just go look, if you just go look and see what I do, and how many other parents at your school district, you guys' school district, that I've talked to. Last year was a no-blame of all 22. And I'm not gonna sit here and blame, I don't know this, that's what, I'm not gonna blame her for everything, because there's way more problems going on than this episode's problems, I promise you that. And if anybody's up there that ain't did nothing wrong, throw a rock at me right now. That's Bible. But, you know what I mean? Like I said, I'm here to activate youth, and any of y'all youth, I'm gonna get everybody, I'm just gonna read my number off you guys, and if you guys want to call me to help, I have programs for your youth, I have programs for the kids, I have parents that I talk to, that we sit and meet up with. I talked, I was talking to Ed, and I'm pretty sure you guys are familiar with Ed, but he's so, he's so distraught, and he is expelled from school, like, and he, I mean, cried, he literally cried in my arms. Like, and I don't like, I don't like the kid feeling like that, like, you don't have no hope no more just because East Lansing expelled.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I gotta cut you off, I'm sorry.
All right, but you had that.
Hi, my name is Erica Hayes, and we have three students in the schools, two in the middle school, and one in the high school. We've been in the district for six years. We also have pastored a church here in Lansing for almost 14 years, so I've been very involved in the community. And so many great things have been sent to me. One of the things that was said that helped me to come up here and speak was the solution of having the teachers monitor, or, you know, use their planning time to monitor the hallways, and maybe they like the extra money. Sorry if you do, and I'm suggesting that we help, but that, like, it made my heart, you know, kind of just, it just impacted me, because I'm like, they need their planning out, or, they have stuff to do, we don't need to be putting one more responsibility on their plate. And so I wanted to, you know, bring solutions to the table, that, one of the things that, I know there's been so much, you know, contention and tumultuousness, but one of the things that I think has been beautiful is how the community has showed up. I mean, I know they had the little banquet room prepared for the, the hands that are meeting, or meeting, and had to go to the auditorium, and this room was filled tonight. And what that shows to me is that there's a whole community here of parents and community people that want to help carry this, that you guys don't have to do this alone. And one of the things that's interesting, we were part of another district for 10 years, wonderful, or six years, wonderful district, and then we moved to East Lansing, another wonderful district, but the thing that was so different, that struck me so much between the old district that we were a part of, and the East Lansing district, was how much of a fortress East Lansing felt like for parents to get into and to be involved in. I mean, the old district, it was like, parents were falling out of the windows when things, you know, happened, because, not because the East Lansing parents don't want to be involved, but because the opportunities aren't presented, and the manpower isn't being utilized potentially in the way that it could be being utilized. And so, as well as from the community. And so, I, I just, my heart is for, about, for the teachers. So I think that can be a potential solution. Oh, and the middle school, actually, this year was wonderful. They sent out emails and, you know, invited all the parents to be, participate, and so I'm not saying, like, there's no invitation, but this is very, very different. And so they, and so many parents jumped on it. It was so wonderful to be just, like, welcomed in, and invited, and so we jumped, we jumped on it. We're in, we're helping, we're trying to do what we can do. And when it comes, and what I keep seeing too, the other day, where I was in the pick a line at the middle school, and a fight broke out. And this mom came out of nowhere. She came flying up, and she's like, oh no, not in my, not in this school, we are not doing this. And she was just, she just, those, those boys were terrified of her. And so, and so there's parents all over the place. And I, I broke up a fight the other day at the middle school. And what's interesting, and we're talking about kind of the attitudes of the kids, the things that start in the elementary school line, when I broke up that fight, this kid afterwards put his hand in my face and was like, don't worry about it. I'm like, um, excuse, excuse me, I'm going to worry about it. So just continue to, you know, the elementary on, but parents want to be in it. It didn't freak me out, I mean, in the middle of that, I didn't mind at all, like, I want to be in the middle of it. Parents want to be in the middle of it, so continue to find ways for, not just parents, but community people to get in the middle. We want to be in the, you don't have to do this alone. So that's why I want you guys to hear, you're not alone, but it does take work, I understand that, it takes work to organize volunteers, but maybe it's time to, you know, utilize the manpower that you have from the community. So that's all I have.
I won't take much for your time, but hi, my name is Lydia Ann Zimadok, and I'm a junior here at East Lansing High School. And with my seven years at this school district, one major thing I've noticed is that every single fight, every single suspension, every single red up, and every single expulsion comes back to children of color. The children of color, more precisely black children of this district, have historically been sent down to the school, down the school to prison pipeline, routing back to our elementary schools. A couple of, a couple, a couple of black staff members are not gonna cut it. A couple of black people stuffed in the back of the office will not cut it. Having less minority teachers than I have fingers on my hand are, is completely unacceptable. It must be extremely difficult to claim the title of diversity while not having anything to support said diversity. Safety relies on community. The more teachers that look like me, and talk like me, and that create a more fulfilling community within East Lansing High School is a true key to success. Thank you.
Nick. And Alyssa For, and Nala Noah.
It's been a long night, so I'll try to make this as quick as I possibly can. My name is Nick Acibado, and I'm a sophomore at East Lansing High School. And I know that what I have to say has definitely been said before, but from the perspective of a black student, I feel that it's important you hear what I have to say. I know that the school board is working to implement change. However, to me, it feels obvious that these changes are being quickly carried out just to avoid ongoing conflict from rightfully upset students, parents, and teachers. And the last week, the focus of this issue has been blurred. This is not a problem with drugs, or politics, or race, or widespread violence. These are specific students who do whatever they want, because there has been no proper discipline in this school. And like most of us, I blame this board. The rumors have not yet been sifted from the facts, and the situation has become bigger than it really is, and it is because of your negligence. The school board has given no sufficient communication about new rules and safety measures, not to the students who have to suffer the consequences of their guilty and unpunished peers, not the teachers who have to give up what little time they have to act as hall monitors because they don't trust the board to keep the students safe, not in the ELP, not even the ELPD officers who are called into, into school for issues that easily could be resolved with an open dialogue, dialogue, instead of perpetuating unnecessary fear. While I'm here, I want to also draw attention to the fact that the board has been sitting around for years, twiddling their thumbs and avoiding putting in the work to actually foster real change, only to come up with half-baked ideas that will do nothing but negatively affect the ELHS population. We understand you want to act quickly, but all issues presented in the last two weeks show that the core of this district is rotten. It cannot be solved with a few weekend meetings and a couple emails, and definitely not by hiring officers who will only misuse their power and abuse black and brown students like they have in the past. This is a foundational issue that requires more attention than you've been giving it. As your responsibility, the students of East Lansing High School both expect and deserve more from you. Thank you.
Hello. I think maybe a ton of people have tried to talk about this issue and not really named it, so I'm just gonna go ahead and try to name it. When we talk about fighting, when we talk about gun violence, when we talk about school shootings, when we talk about bullying, when we talk about sexual assault, we're almost always talking about male violence. Until we address a culture that socializes men and boys to stifle their feelings, to reject characteristics that we feminize, like being caring, nurturing, vulnerable, and teach boys that violence is not a way to solve their problems or prove their worth, we will be putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhaging wound. And I urge the district to try to find ways to have these conversations. It seems like a lot of people want to have conversations about the same thing. Thank you so much to the board and superintendents for all that you've done, and thank you, Kath, for continuing to love our children and provide dignity and safety for all of our kids.
That one's for Nala, Wow, and me. Nala. Sherry's role, okay.
All right, I'm gonna try to make this short, because I'm gonna go home. I already do too. Okay, so I'm Rainie Inger, I'm a freshman at the high school. And I would like to share a statement from the document that I wrote with the input of other students, addressing the recent events at the high school. East Lansing High School students are discontent with the actions or lack thereof the Board of Education has taken to address the ongoing situation. We are angry, we are stressed, we feel unsafe, but most of all, we are exhausted. We are tired of our voices not being heard, our opinions and input being cast aside, and we are tired of rampant violence in the school district. We are tired of students and staff getting hurt, both physically and emotionally. We know you care about this district, its students and our teachers. Prove it, show us, implement change. Next, I would like to share a few points from the document that I wrote, specifically addressing the email that the board sent on January 24th, with which outlined some proposed next steps the district would be taking at the high school level. I know that feedback on the steps was requested earlier in the meeting, and I am here to provide that feedback through a student perspective. I agree with some of the steps outlined in the board's email. Metal detectors and mandatory wearing of IDs are both good ideas, as were some of the other ideas outlined in that email. However, a few of the outlined steps in the board's email were specifically concerning, like a ban on backpacks in classrooms. This ban will not ensure the safety of students and staff. A weapon could be hidden just as easily in a pocket or pens case as it could be in a backpack. And for students with schedules forcing them to move between classes far apart from each other, the ban would be inconvenient, necessitating increased locker stops in the crowded locker commons area. Additionally, most fights that take place in the high school building take place in those locker commons, or in the nearby bathroom. Programming even more people into this densely packed area could put more students in potential danger should a fight break out, or in the worst-case scenario, a firearm be used. Additionally, a ban on cell phones, as the board proposed, would not remedy the problem at hand. A cellphone ban would not reduce the concerns some have regarding students using their cell phones to coordinate dangerous activities. Students are just as able and as likely to engage in online destructive behavior outside of school. Taking away students' cellphone privileges will only prompt them to find more ways to defy this rule, and is unnecessarily punitive for those students who are not misbehaving. While heightened discipline regarding, related to student cellphone use during class time is definitely needed, I agree, taking away students' cellphone privileges during passing time and lunch is unreasonable. On Tuesday, January 24th, the ELPD was first notified of a possible weapon in the high school by a parent whose child had notified them of this situation. Had a cellphone ban been in place that day, the police might never have been called, and if there had, in fact, been a firearm in the school, the absence of police may have led to casualties. I understand that this is an extrapolation, but in the presence of possible gun violence, I think it is invaluable to consider all possible outputs. Students need to be able to contact parents and support systems such as therapists while in school. Banning cell phones is not a solution, it is a hollow reassurance at best. Thank you for your time, and I encourage you to read the full document that I wrote with the input of other students, which can be accessed via the EOPS Parents, Students, and Staff Facebook group, and which was also emailed to each trustee and the superintendent earlier today. Thank you.
That is all the public comment that I have. Is there any others that have just not yet made their way to, Miss Hall, make sure to miss anyone here? Heather Booth. Just checking back with the one who goes, one of the capsules. Heather Booth here, I just wanted to make comment. Thank you. At this point in time, we'll move to board discussion. About a five-minute break has been requested, and then we'll move to board discussion. And I've got 10:26, so welcome back. Now is the portion of our meeting where the board can discuss what they've heard, or some of us, again, may just need to process it. Once again, I want to thank everyone who participated this evening, it's been a really long night, and you stuck it up, and you shared your feelings, and your hopes, and your fears, and your dreams, and I really appreciate it. Turn it over to the board members.
I would like to move that the Board of Education remove trustee Assam from her role as president of the Board of Education for East Lansing Public Schools with clause for violation of policies. The following policies and evidence are what I will leave next. 2201, A2 for powers, general powers. The board will provide for the safety and welfare for students while at school for school-sponsored activity or events, and while traveling to or from school for a school-sponsored activity or event as required by law. 2302, A1 for code of ethics. Each board member will remember that the board's primary, board member's primary concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the district school. 2302, A6. Board members will render all decisions based on objective evaluation of critical information exercising attendant judgment. 2302, A7. Board members will encourage constructive dialogue among board members and the board, and students, staff, parents, guardians, and the school community. 2302, A9. Board members will work constructively and collaboratively with other board members to establish effective policies and procedures. 2302, A10. Board members will work constructively and collaboratively with the superintendent, staff members, students, parents, and community stakeholders. 2302, A16. Board members will be mindful of the board member's fiduciary obligations to the district, including duties of loyalty and care placed in the district at risk above a board member's personal interest. 2302, B1. If board member will not act in isolation operating as if a board of one. Evidence. On 4/12/2021, a parent provided public comment regarding the impact of the middle school slavery assignment on their student, as reported in the meeting minutes and video recording for April 12. On 5/10/2021, I read my statement regarding the 48 days of silence from the board in response to the middle school assignment, as reported in the minutes and in local news reports. On 6/14/2021, Portrait Editorial Board submitted an open letter to the district requesting a town hall, as reported in the meeting minutes and in the portrait news for June 14. On 10/11/2021, a parent provided public comment regarding fighting and the discipline choice for their student. Also, the ELEA president at the time provided public comment regarding teacher safety, as reported in the meeting minutes and video recording for October 11. On 10/25/2021, the then ELEA president provided public comment regarding teacher safety and how teachers are doing, as reported in the minute, meeting. and how teachers are doing as reported in the meeting minutes and video recording for October 25. Also, during board discussion for the same meeting, Trustee Asso called the statement from the ELEA president a misguided statement from our ELEA president. Discipline problems are likely due to being shut down for 18 months. I also read a statement highlighting my concerns. While I agree that the pause in traditional celebrations is an equity issue that must be addressed, the following equity issues are equally as concerning to me. Updating curriculum dividing slavery assignment from 2020-2021 school year. Decline in mental health of our staff and students. An uptick in behavioral and violent outbursts, bullying, communication and transparency. And support for teachers and staff as recorded in the minute meetings and video recording for October 25. On 11/8/2021, a parent provided public comment regarding school violence. Also, in the same meeting, an ELEA representative provided an ELEA report sharing concerns about violence. During board discussion, I brought up the top of the violence in our schools. I also suggested switching to a more collaborative approach, bringing caregivers and volunteers in the building again. I reminded the community about OK to save all the texts. Anonymous tips in case of harm or self-harm and the information is given to the building administration. During board discussion, Trustee Chambers commented that she was uncomfortable with the correspondence around violence. The conversation on social media around our school choice students or those kids is disturbing and has great impact on her. She also appreciates the invitation to come into the school. Protocols haven't allowed to bring parents back into the school and the issue of safety is a complicated situation and we on our own are not going to be able to solve. Please remember the transition is very hard for students, teachers, and parents. The past 18 months has affected everyone as reported in the minute meetings and video recording for November 8. On 12/13/2021, a parent provided public comment to discuss plans for increased school safety as reported in the minutes and video recording for December 13. On 2/12/2022, the ELEA president provided public comment regarding the voices of teachers as it related to violence in our buildings. On 3/14/2022, a parent provided public comment regarding discussions during meetings. Another parent provided public comment regarding poor transparency. On 5/7/22, I emailed the board with questions regarding my hiring process. 5/22/22, I emailed the board with my plan to introduce a motion to review our hiring process. On 5/23/22, I moved to amend the agenda to include hiring process review that went unseconded and voted no to the new hires as reported in the minute meetings and video recording. On 6/13/22, I wrote a note to the new hires. And the parent provided a public comment regarding gun safety. On 6/27/22, I was the sole vote to no to the new hires. On 7/25, I was the sole vote no to the new hires. On 8/16/22, I was the sole vote no to the new hires. On 1/9/2023, I fired a one-time agreement for the office slate and was the sole vote no to the proposed slate as reported in the meeting minutes, video recording, for January 9 and local news reports. On January 23/2023, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education, six students and 14 adults, including staff, provided a public comment expressing concerns around safety at the high school as reported in the draft minutes and video recording for January 23. During board discussion in response to the public comment around safety at the high school, Trustee Asso was recorded to say that the saying "I'm scared" is not helpful when suggesting the need for concrete ideas rather than more emotional testimony as reported in the meeting minutes. On January 24th, the high school endured another shelter in place. On January 26th, another shelter in place. On January 24th, the board also sent a email out to everyone that I did not provide any part. And finally, oh no, not finally. The building that I have experienced on this board for having a difference of opinion is also something that should be addressed. We don't have any policies for it, but we probably should have done it for these students. And the community as well.
Give a second.
Seconded.
Before we proceed any further, I would like to take this opportunity to resign from the presidency. I have become a distraction for the work that needs to be done, which is really more important than sitting in this presidential seat. I have made this decision in connection with only the people closest to me and my higher power and came to this conclusion that I am not going to, and this to quote, I don't want to put anybody in a position to have to choose to feel like they have inflicted harm on me as their friend in this situation. I have resigned effective at the end of this meeting from my presidency. At this point, you can withdraw your motion. Or we can take your motion. Take what's your motion. Does not seem like there's anything to it at this point, but it's up to you to withdraw it. I'll withdraw my motion. Anybody else? Seeing nothing further, anybody have any announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't read it. Oh. So I'm just gonna read a statement. And so it has been a long week and a half, I can't remember two weeks. And I have done a lot of reflection and I'm just gonna read this so you can kind of get a little bit of where I stand. "So we have to do better. The school board and administration must do a better job of transparency, communication, and most of all, doing all it can to ensure a safe, healthy, and equitable space for the education of our most precious and valued community members, our children. I admire the courage, bravery, and honesty exhibited at our last E-Board meeting and here tonight and on Friday with our community coming out and sharing meeting, sharing experiences and concerns. As an elected leader, it is vital that community members we represent make their voices heard to us. To those who spoke up in person, those who have called me, and those I have spoken to in person, please be assured I hear you and I thank you for your thoughts, ideas, and passion. I also get it, as a mother, I get it. I have two kids in the ELPS schools. I share the concern of wanting my children to attend a safe school. I share the desire to have my kids grow up in a community that embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion, where they can get a high-quality education and the safest environment possible. To prepare them for the world after high school and beyond and beyond East Lansing, Michigan. In a vibrant community with various perspectives, opinions, experiences, and ideas, we are not going to agree on everything, maybe very little at different points in time. However, what I think we can all agree on is we want safe schools and a great education for our students. I also think we can all agree we have extremely dedicated and skilled teachers, students, and administrators. We can also agree to disagree on various approaches, but we should not discount the level of dedication all these folks bring to their work and community. To these folks, I say thank you for all your work, especially these past few weeks. As an elected Board trustee, I know I will make decisions not everyone will agree with. This is fine because I know no one, including everyone on this board, administration, and community members at large have a monopoly on the solutions. It will take everyone and it is a process. When I ran for school board, I was fully aware that some won't agree with me on certain issues. As mentioned, this is 100% fine and a part of the democratic process. I also told folks I will do my best to share my reasoning based on the information I had at the time. For those interested here is where I stand on a few issues. I believe in restorative justice. I believe we can do a better job of explaining it, training for it, and educating about it and implementing it when it should be implemented. I believe the Board and administration must do a better job at communicating with the community, explaining processes, and promoting as much transparency as we can under the current law. I believe in due process and holding accountability. I tell my kids this all the time. Any decision that you make, there is consequences and accountability, good and bad. I believe in gathering as much information as possible to make the best decision I can as a Board member. I believe in empathy. Compassion isn't a weakness, rather it's strength and helps... I believe empathy and compassion isn't a weakness, rather it is strength and helps make clear-headed decisions. It will take all of us to move forward in a healthy way. Because of the community voices, I am confident we will become a better board. Because of the passion and dedication repeatedly exhibited through our experiences through COVID and again within the last few weeks, we will come, will become a stronger and better school community. Thank you.
What else would like to be, any comments?
I have a couple of comments, just a couple of things that I've heard throughout the week and again tonight that I'd like to call the district to try to focus on. Seems like our kids really need some heavy social emotional learning, so try to get some curriculum, I mean I know our teachers always do it, already do it, but... And I heard from a lot of parents that they feel like their kids need conflict resolution skills, that we need to explicitly be teaching it if we're gonna hold them accountable for it. And then I'd heard it before, but I know someone brought it. I think we need a group mediation plan. If we're expecting to be a community, we need to teach and expect everyone to know how to communicate. We need to have someone there to do it. And I also just want to bring up a concern of mine that I've heard throughout the week and this is mainly for our administration team, I guess, but a concern of mine is that, I think because I was a teacher, teachers feel safe talking to me, but they don't feel safe to speak out. And that is, I think, a community problem. I'm not gonna air their explicit concerns here, but it seems like they feel unsafe and it's really hard for them to feel safe. If it's hard for them to feel safe to their administration, they can only do so much and they can only speak out so much and ask for so much for our kids. So I don't know how exactly we fix that. But I think it's a serious problem in East Lansing. I just want that to be said.
I typically don't read prepared statements. It's my preference usually to just speak from the heart, but tonight I cannot risk being imprecise with my words, so I prepared some brief comments. I want to first extend my appreciation to our teachers who have helped to keep things together during incredibly trying circumstances. In the midst of all that has been happening this week, my son came home from middle school absolutely belly laughing, telling us a story about his social studies teacher's lesson that day. Our teachers are really just the best. I also want to thank the students who have held us to account and shared their stories over the last week. Never am I prouder of you as I am when you speak up for what you believe is right. It's an important reminder to me of what we're doing right in this district. I want to thank our superintendent for remaining, as always, steadfast in the midst of challenge and remaining focused on responding promptly, but also taking the time to gather feedback from critical stakeholders to inform her plans. Finally, I want to thank the mayor, his staff, and my colleague Dr. Carter Andrews for hosting a community forum on Friday where ideas could be discussed in a solutions-based environment. I also want to acknowledge my responsibility and the failures in recent weeks. I spent a lot of time this week critically reflecting on my role in various aspects of our administrative processes. My intention in my role as school board member has always been to support our students, teachers, and administrators in cultivating a positive learning and working environment for all. I cannot tell you how personally devastating it is to acknowledge that I have not lived up to that intention. However, as Dr. Carter Andrews reminded us on Friday, intention does not have equal impact. So I can recognize that despite my intentions to do otherwise, I have contributed to the problem. That said, I've never been a person who walked away from a challenge. A few weeks ago, I had the honor of attending the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission of Mid-Michigan's Day of Celebration. At that event, I recall Mayor Bacon saying that when he encounters a challenge, he goes in with the belief that the solution is already in the room. Throughout this week, I've been reflecting on the truth of those words for our current situation. Having served on the Board for the last five years, I can tell you that I have the utmost confidence in our district's leadership, including our teachers and students. The plan presented tonight is a testament to the fact that our educators are absolutely top-notch. I hope that tonight will be a turning point, not in the sense of ignoring or minimizing what has happened, but a turning point in the sense that when we look back on this period, this meeting will be seen as the first step in building back the community's trust and our district's leadership. And I remain committed to being part of that continued positive change. Thank you.
I too have a statement that I prepared that I question reading tonight, but I think it's appropriate now, so I'll read it. First, now in my statement, I just want to recognize your humility in stepping away from this really, really tough position. I hate that that's been a distraction in leadership here, but I appreciate you recognizing that and still being humble and hopefully stand with us as we continue in this work. So following our board meeting last week, this has been an intense period of listening, learning, and working to lead with our kids and our educators at the center. This work is not easy and no work is when it's meaningful and life-changing. Solutions are rarely clear and simple and take time. I feel like in the midst of all of this, it could be easy to lose sight, though, of the incredible strides we've made as a district to be community-driven with our kids at the center. I can tell you personally that I was not thinking this carefully and intentionally about community before I stepped into this district. I truly believe it is the intentional and equitable work of East Lansing, spearheaded by our administration on this stage and member of this Board and Boards before us that have made me and our entire community better and more able to think objectively with all sides in mind. I'm so grateful for that and I will continue doing that while I serve on this Board. After receiving communication from our district yesterday, I knew we were headed on the right path. I was so happy to hear today from my own daughter, her peers, and several teachers that today at East Lansing High School was awesome. Her words, but I believe it. And you know what, I was not surprised because we have an incredible community. I knew that our kids led by their amazing teachers and admin and parents that took to heart. We needed to talk to our kids about following the rules, that we were gonna do it together. And we did, they did. I knew that I wasn't going to be in an easy position sitting on this Board and that hard choices were gonna have to be made. But I have to say, I was not prepared for all of the vitriol and fallacies that came out of our board meeting last week. I am not asking for sympathy. I understand that I was elected to serve in this role and I'm honored to do so. But I'm just asking for this community to extend a little bit of their humanity to myself, my fellow Board members, administrators, teachers, and everyone that makes up this beautiful community. In closing, I know what we all want and that's a healthy, safe, and supportive learning environment for our kids and teachers and I appreciate the plan that was put forth tonight that will allow us to make meaningful changes as we move forward. Thanks.
I did not prepare a statement in hindsight, that was foolish. I was more concerned about which aspects of the plan I wanted to get clarification on and moving forward with that. I want to express my absolute gratitude for all of the work that our superintendent and her team has put in this week and the staff. You guys have worked around the clock and on very short notice and you have given everything you possibly could and I'm exceptionally grateful for it. I'm grateful to everyone who came up tonight to point out the good things in our district because we have a ton. This is a phenomenal district, it's a great place to be and I really feel like we are on the right path and I'm exceptionally hopeful. We have a lot of work to do, but just like... We have a lot of work to do, but just like trustee Chambers said, we have what we need in the room. And so I'm, I'm proud to be here, this has been an exceptionally difficult week, um, but I, I hope that we will move on and be stronger from here.
I think for me, I would also like to, um, move that the Board of Education remove trustee Chambers from her position as vice president for the same reasons that I have provided for trustee Esso.
Do I have a second? With a second? Which does not move forward. Anything else to say, Monica? Anybody else want to contribute, any, anything? Any announcements?
You should probably elect a new president.
What's that?
You should probably elect a new president.
Uh, I am, I am the president until we adjourn.
Good, okay. I didn't know how that would work.
The president would be terrible to step into the presidency, uh, seat at our next meeting, and we would hold an election for the presidency at that election.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. Just a clarification, I wouldn't serve as president, just in my capacity as a vice president, I'll run the mood meeting until a vice, until a president can go.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, no announcements. I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.